Uh, CSP, what a shit show. People have been calling and protesting for months. Buscano, Price, Rodriguez, what's wrong with y'all? We've said exactly what we want. Defund the police, do not fund CSP. The opposite of what we want, and we have made that very clear. You guys are hearing us, but you're not listening to us. Stop disrespecting those who are putting their lives on the line to fight for a better city while y'all get paid to take a fucking vacation. We are the majority. Stop ignoring us, or we will make it impossible for you to do so. Stop giving cops more money and power. Stop letting them hurt us. Stop letting cops hurt us. Stop letting cops kill us. Stop letting cops hurt us. Stop letting cops kill us. Stop letting cops hurt us. Stop letting cops kill us. Stop letting-
So, so Speaker, please stop being repetitive and either continue with your comments or we're gonna cut you off.
Stop fucking interrupting me. This is the second time I've ever been interrupted with public comment. Fuck you guys, I'm done.
Thank you. So, Madam President, apparently our broadcast on Channel 35 has gone down. I suggest we take a brief recess to short, uh, sort this out, um, uh, because we, we need the broadcast.
All right, let's go ahead and try to fix that. Members, we'll take a recess and we'll update you as we figure out what the situation is. Let's go ahead and take a 15-minute break, recess, I should say, to figure out what's happening with our broadcast. Thanks.
I'll do it. I'll explain it. But let's take a roll call first.
All right. We're back, members? So, Madam Clerk, why don't we go ahead and take a quick roll call just to make sure everyone is still with us?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Blumentfeld. Mr. Blumentfeld.
President.
Thank you. Bonin.
President.
Buscano.
Here.
Sidio.
Sidio here.
Harris Dawson.
Here.
Corretts.
Corretts, present.
Kirkorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
Wesson.
Wesson here.
Fourteen members and a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, why don't you go ahead and read that, um, substitute motion on item 44 for-
Yes, thank you.
For the public one more time?
Th- this was the same substitute motion for item 44 that Mr. Price read out. Um, I'm not sure whether he read it out when we were having glitches in the system, so in an abundance of caution, as lawyers like to say, I'm gonna reread it. Uh, I'll read the moving clauses. I therefore move that pursuant to Charter Section 371 and Administrative Code Section 7.2, 7.3, the council find that due to the immediate need to comply with the agreement with the County of Los Angeles to house homeless individuals whose health is at risk from both COVID-19 and living near freeway overpasses, underpasses, and ramps, and the inability of a prior, a competitive bidding process concerning 5215 South Figueroa to select a qualified respondent. The public interest or necessity requires a long-term ground lease for properties located at 5215 and 5260 South Figueroe Street to South LA Impact without advertisement for bids for the purpose of constructing permanent supportive housing for the homeless. I further move that the city administrative officer, with the assistance of the chief legislative analyst, Housing and Community Investment Department, city attorney, and any other relevant departments, be directed, prepare, and execute all necessary documents to effectuate the development of permanent supportive housing on the properties, including executing the disposition and development agreements. And the name of the developer, I may have misspoke, is Solau, Solau Impact. So, it's S-O-L-A Impact. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Let's go ahead and go back to public comment and resume with our next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Adeline Bertha. I would like to speak on item number 46.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Um, greetings again. My name is Adeline Bertha. I work for the United Coalition East Prevention Project in Skid Row, a prevention program centered on enhancing community safety and wellness. On behalf of concerned coalition members and in unison with those who advocate with people experiencing homelessness, including service in our tweets, we express our opposition to item 46, Council File 20-0147. Connecting our unhoused neighbors with resources and support they need are critical at this time. Place-based spot zoning to keep people out of area does not work. The related enforcement leads to criminalization and negative interactions with law enforcement. Sweeps of unhoused neighbors around a bridge home shelters would impact the vulnerable and increased risk during this coronavirus pandemic. We must continue to consider the unintentional consequences of cleanup efforts and place emphasis on the needs of those most impacted. A primary tenet of USETUP is our commitment to change environments to discourage alcohol and other drug-related problems and enhance positive social interactions. Displacement-
Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi there, my name is Jed Perry with Street Watch L.A. I'd like to speak on item, uh, 46 and general public comment.
You have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanna echo what a lot of callers are saying, and I wanna make it clear that folks are not against trash pickup and sanitation services, poor folks who are forced to live in public spaces, but that's not what CARE+ is about at all. CARE+ is all about displacing and harassing homeless people out of areas marked, uh, on the special enforcement zone map or in quote-unquote cleanup zones. Uh, and you all know this is a violation of CDC to bring this back. To vote yes on this is an immediate threat, an actual threat to public health and safety. CARE+ sweeps are. Um, and so, you know, it's disgusting to hear even just a few weeks ago, Joe Buscano on Mayor Guard said he's saying that equally important, this is a quote from Buscano, "Equally important to shelter beds are CARE+ sweeps to erase people." Equally fucking important, huh? Do any of you agree with that? Do folks here agree with that, that it's equally important to criminalize folks as to getting them help? Folks like my friend Rosie, who's definitely a disabled who lives in El Pueblo? You force her to move all of belongings out of a cleanup area once a week? Or my friend Hal, who's in a wheelchair in the straighter enforcement zone? Do any of you know anyone who lives in these enforcement zones? Have you talked to folks who live in them? No, you don't, because, because you don't talk to people around the street. You talk to NIMBYs and cops, and you're all about erasing people. This is disgusting, uh, it will not stand. Vote no, and if you don't vote no and you try and bring this shit back, you're gonna see us in the streets, because we're gonna be the ones that are protecting public health and safety. You're the ones violating CDC guidelines here. Shame on you, Joe Buscano. Fuck you, Joe Buscano. I yield my time.
Next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Hall, and I'm calling to comment on item number 46. Um, I live near a bridge home, and I don't believe that the area surrounding it should be subject to any sweeps or cleanups. Resuming CARE+ is cruel during a pandemic. Um, more aggressive policing and criminalization won't solve the homelessness crisis. Sweeps do little more than punish the homeless. It destroys what little they own and forces them to relocate, creating a vicious cycle. So, I just encourage you to please vote no on number 46. Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, my name is Daviel Shai, and I would like to speak on item 46.
Great, you have a minute.
Um, I think to call the, the sweeps cleaning is misleading, and, um, it equates human beings with, uh, garbage. It's important to, um, increase the public health infrastructure, especially in zones where unfortunately tents are the only temporary solution, um, while we try to get more housing and not just, uh, cosmetic efforts with, um, these shelters that don't have the capacity for the real numbers that we're dealing with. Um, I also urge you to remove law enforcement from the street cleaning efforts, because the harassment that is inevitable when you have law enforcement with these, uh, underserved populations. Um, it could be a sanitation issue to clean, uh, around and not, uh, disturb the, uh, temporary housing for these individuals. Please eliminate complaint-driven models, which just weaponizes the police and serves only the private interests, um, doesn't really represent the people. Please rescind ordinance 41.18B and-
Next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Adam, and I'd like to speak on item 46 and give a general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, with regards to item 46, what I truly do not understand is that it's been well-established that these so-called sweeps do not actually have any kind of public health benefit. The sanitation department has already come out and said that. So, I'm confused as to why this is being pushed even more during a pandemic. And you have to understand that we know that this is a criminal act, because homelessness is not criminalizing, uh, itself, but what is criminalized, what is criminal is putting all of our public health at risk by enforcing these sweeps, because our unhoused neighbors are just as much Angelinos as anybody else here. And on to public comments. I hope you understand, and this isn't abundantly clear now by all the other public comments that have been made hitherto, we mean defund the police. We do not mean increase funding to this community policing Trojan horse. If it's been endorsed by Chief Moore, who's already proven to be a criminal, then we know that it's not actually the justice that we deserve. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, um, my name is Kelly Dwyess, and I'd like to speak on 46.
You have a minute. Please begin.
Um, I think it's pretty ridiculous to continue to waste money essentially on moving people around and destroying their property, um, when we talk about not having money to house the homeless. I think we need to contextualize that in the amount of money that we spend brutalizing the homeless. Um, and I also think that, you know, it's absolutely insulting to think of the city, uh, budget as small. Um, we have the money, we are not a poor city. We have the money to house every single homeless person, and we are choosing willfully not to do it, and I don't understand why. Um, if it's corporate interests, I really don't understand, but you need to take a hard look at yourself in the mirror and think about your humanity, and really just understand that you're kicking people who have absolutely nothing, and you're making their lives incredibly horrible, and it's only gonna get worse. Thanks. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yeah, can you hear me? Uh, my name is Sachin Medhaker, um, and I'm from the Echo Park Neighborhood Council, so I'm, I'm speaking on item 46, and we, we passed a CIS about it, so my understanding is I get some extra amount of time because of that.
Give me just a second, caller. Hold on for just a second.
Okay.
You have five minutes to go ahead and speak on your community impact statement. Go ahead and state your name one more time.
Yeah, uh, so my name is Sachin Medhaker. Um, I'm one of the co-chairs of our Home Assistance and Housing Committee at the Echo Park Neighborhood Council. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna speak, uh, opposed to item 46, like so many people have spoken on, um, and I'm gonna read a letter that we attached that is specifically about enforcement zones overall, but, um, but so, just the idea of, of these, I mean, we're at the height of the pandemic, and, you know, we did the logic of having stopped this enforcement for health concern and resuming it at the point where it's so much, uh, so much worse. First off, this doesn't make sense, but, um, I'm gonna just get into the letter that we wrote, and, um, here it is. Um, so, "The Echo Park Neighborhood Council opposes the creation of an enforcement zone around, uh, the Riverside Average Home Project and the reliance on such enforcement zones around other ABH projects. Enforcement zones unnecessarily create damaging and punitive interactions between unhoused Angelinos in the LAPD. ABH projects are often run at capacity, and displacing people who are simply trying to survive nearby and who do not have a bed available to them does nothing to solve the underlying issues, and in fact, actually worsens them. Forcing unhoused Angelinos to constantly uproot their lives and change locations for fear of punishment and force is traumatizing and counterproductive. It makes it harder for them to access services and makes it harder for their case managers to connect with them. Enforcement zones are also unjustifiably expensive. To pay for LAPD officers working 24-hour shifts around these shelters, the mayor's 2021 budget calls for 8.4 million in LAPD overtime. That's more than the entire sworn overtime for the LAFD and more than four times the budget for the citywide domestic abuse response teams. This also doesn't factor in the incredible amount of pain and taxpayer dollars that go into cycling unhoused Angelinos in and out of the criminal justice system for the crime of being poor. It's extremely hard to justify preserving this cost at a time when the essential services are being cut, and we are relieved to hear that the final determination of how the budget will impact this project has yet to be determined. This money is much better spent being invested in helping unhoused Angelinos find housing and get connected to case management, hygiene, and other essential services. We've heard the rhetoric that suggests that special enforcement zones are necessary to secure the support of the community. As representatives of our community, we would like to counter this narrative and make it perfectly clear that we welcome abridged home shelters in our community without the inclusion of these special enforcement and cleaning zones. Don't harm our unhoused Angelinos for being poor. Thank you."
Thank you.
Okay, let's take the next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Chris Venn. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. What items would you like to speak on?
I, I, uh, wish to speak to item 46.
Sure, you have one minute.
I work in San, I work in, thank you, I work in San Pedro, CD 58, and I would like to speak specifically to the harm Agenda 46, Agenda, item 46 would create. I oppose the authorization of the Bureau of Sanitation to resume CARE+ cleanups within the special cleaning zones established around bridge home shelters. The special cleaning zone would, I wish to speak to the situation in San Pedro, would severely affect the unhoused community located near the post office on Beacon Street between 8th and 9th Streets. Despite the opening of a bridge home shelter at 515 North Beacon, now filled to capacity, there are currently 53 tents surrounding the post office. Public health and COVID are being used to justify these new sweeps, but resuming CARE+ sweeps now would be in violation of CDC guidelines during the COVID pandemic, which recommend that unhoused people shelter in place-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Debbie Wishby, and I would like to speak, uh, one minute on public comment and also on item 46.
Okay, you have, um, two minutes for each. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, first, I, I would like to speak on public comment. Um, I serve as a commissioner on the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners for the Central Area, and within that capacity, uh, there are a number of bridge housing, uh, units that have been accepted by these deceased communities. Now, this central area covers everything from the Hollywood Hills down to downtown Los Angeles, where we know we have Skid Row. And within that capacity, um, although the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners does not, we do not seek information on bridge housing, we do receive, and I have received information on the general consensus that with the bridge housing, there was the, the interest in having the zones so that there would be cleanup. Um, so, uh, it, just for general information-
Please go ahead with your general public comment. Okay, I believe the Speaker has hung up already.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Theo DiMarco. I'm with Street Watch L.A., and I'd like to speak on item 46 and make a general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute, one minute for each. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Vote no on 46. Care+ sweeps go against CDC guidelines for COVID-19 and put unhoused Angelinos at higher risk of both the pandemic and police violence. Considering that black people in LA experience homelessness at more than four times the rate of the white people here, Care+ sweeps are a direct attack on struggling black Angelinos and encourage police harassment and violence against our unhoused neighbors. Meanwhile, 40% of unhoused youth in LA identify as LGBTQ+, most of them are black, and so these sweeps are a direct attack likewise on the queer community. We, the people, are demanding you defund and disarm police and your response is to take money out of the budget intended to care for our unhoused neighbors and give it instead to the violent gang that is LAPD. We need services, not sweeps. Even though HHH and Mayor Garcetti promised to eliminate homelessness in LA, we have overcrowded shelters surrounded by struggling Angelinos who want to get inside, who need help and can't get it. And instead of helping these citizens, who are human beings, the city polices them 24/7 with these special enforcement zones.
You want to move on to your general public comment?
Sweeps set the LAPD on unhoused people like absolute predators. And as we've seen during the protests over the past several months, this city's police are a violent gang who escalate encounters without remorse and seemingly with great pleasure. So police do not protect or serve unhoused people.
Speaker, are you there?
And encouraging, and encouraging confrontations between cops and unhoused Angelinos is negligence. UCLA is estimating that 365,000 renters in LA are in imminent danger of homelessness unless the city takes sweeping actions like canceling the rent. So those families will still soon be subject to the violence that this city and LAPD already rain on our 70,000 unhoused neighbors. So defund the police, cancel the rent now, and fund services, not sweeps. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, what items would you like to speak on, Speaker?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it, can you hear me?
Yes, which items would you like to speak on?
Oh, my fault. I'd like to speak on items 37 and 46.
Okay, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. I was going to call in and my cat jumped on me, so the phone fell on my head. Anyway, I don't want to take up too much time to reemphasize what everyone has already said. I was calling in just to speak on item 46, but then I heard another speaker talk about items 37 and 39 and I find it extremely disheartening to hear that the report that might presage what seemed like a very promising start to reforming policing in LA with an independent report is being funded by a police foundation. I think that's an extremely disappointing way to start and I would urge you to please vote no on that. I think that any community that is thinking about allocating money to further policing would have a better use for that money in lighting it on fire in the desert or many of other better things. Lastly, I suppose on item 46, yeah, please vote no. I think it is a moral outrage to attempt to enforce already draconian, fascistic policies against the poorest Angelinos who are the most vulnerable during a pandemic, which is only going to harm them and the greater LA community by increasing the probability that people who are already unstable in their housing and health are going to have further jeopardy trying to access resources and keep themselves safe and keep all of us safe. Thank you so much. Sorry about that beginning again. Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hey, is this me?
Yes, which items would you like to speak on?
I would like to speak on items 24, 37, 39 through 41, 46, and give general public comment.
You have three minutes for all your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. Greetings, noble council. I hope you all enjoyed your fucking vacation. To start, on item 24, if there's anyone on this council that refuses to acknowledge we're still living in a state of emergency, may you and all your descendants be eternally haunted by the souls you ripped from the earth. Alfresco is still in full swing out here while entire generations fight for their life.
Speaker, could you please get clearly on topic and let us know what you're speaking on?
Item 37, a $350,000 donation to the cops, from the cops, to conduct an investigation of the cops by the cops? Is that seriously what's being suggested here? I sincerely hope you rot in hell, Rodriguez and Zidio, and I suggest you take Lee, Coretts, and Bloomingfield with you. Items 39 through 41 are slap in the fucking face. How have you not understood that cops don't need more money, you bootlicking imperialist fuck? Item 46, regarding the special enforcement zones that come with Garcetti's Gulags, stop making laws that criminalize the unhoused. For the love of Christ, let these people live their lives without resting under the watchful eyes of murderers. Furthermore, the fact you're building these depressing prisons in the first place while nearly all hotels in this city remain empty is a fucking disgrace. Be warned, the stars are aligned and not in your favor. Never in modern history have the obvious shortcomings of a ruling class been so abundantly clear. The lack of accountability from cities-
So I assume you are in general public comment now, Speaker?
... proving very serious problems in the face of increased awareness and activism is laughable. I would be terrified right now if all you motherfuckers weren't such clowns. Fuck your police reform. Fuck your police. Fuck your corporate interests. Fuck your rent and your real estate. Fuck your tourists. Fuck your film propaganda machine. The true magic and power of this city sleeps in the heart of the working class and we're finally wise fucking awake. Ban evictions, cancel rents, abolish the police, all power to the people. I yield the rest of my time.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, what items do you want to speak on?
I would like to speak on 46 and general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Karen Clancy. I'm a resident of Echo Park. I would like you to vote no on item 46. The sweeps are traumatizing and they invite more unnecessary interactions with law enforcement. And, you know, instead of treating these unhoused people, which are our neighbors, like garbage, like a previous speaker said, we should be providing them with resources to the area at the very least, like trash bins and bathrooms, those are very helpful to them. And then for general public comment, I would say this issue's about to get much, much worse. Like other speakers have said, many thousands are at risk, many, many thousands are at risk of eviction and we won't be able to quote sweep away all these people that have been evicted. So I would recommend that you cancel rent, take advantage of the empty hotel rooms, take over city-owned golf courses, parking lots. I mean, we need to get creative here. And we all know how hard it is, hopefully, how, we know how hard it is to get off the streets once you're there. So cancel rent is not a slogan that I'm saying.
All right, thank you, Speaker.
It's actually something we need to be doing. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Okay, I believe we've hit the end of our allotted time. In fact, we extended it by probably 20 minutes because of the glitch we had.
So that concludes public comment for all items, including general public comment, but we do have to reopen public comment on Mr. City Attorney for the two bit items?
Yes. So if we clear the phone lines and then reopen them only for people who were calling in for items two and three. The reason we're doing this is that items two and three are hearings regarding the establishment of business improvement districts. And we are required to hear from all members of the public who wish to speak on those items. So after clearing and reopening the lines, we're going to take any other speakers who haven't had an opportunity to speak but want to speak about items two and three only. Those are the only things that are open for public comment. And just so it's clear, item number two regards the establishment of the Encino Commons Property Business Improvement District. And item three involves the establishment of the Old Granada Village CD 12 Property Business Improvement District. So I suggest while the lines are being cleared and reopened, that the clerk reread the call in for information for anybody who's interested in speaking on items two or three only.
Madam Clerk, go ahead.
And as indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment on items two and three only should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
Okay, let's go ahead and start public comment for items two and three only.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Mimi again. Thanks so much for continuing to interrupt me. I'm so sick of you guys doing this. I'm not doing anything wrong. You guys are interrupting me when I'm trying to talk to you.
So Speaker, are you-
I should be able to keep going.
Speaker, are you speaking on items, on either of the business improvement district Well, appears the speaker-
Public comment should be, should be longer since you cut everybody off.
Okay, so Madam President, I suggest we cut the speaker off. She's not speaking on item two or three.
Wow, big surprise.
And let's move on to the next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Okay, we appear to have nobody on that line.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Yes, hello. Do you wish to speak on either or both of the business improvement district items?
Yes, I do.
Which ones would you like to speak on?
Both of them, actually.
Okay, you have two minutes. Please stay on topic.
I have what? How many minutes?
You have two minutes to speak on each of the, cumulatively on the two items. You must stay on topic.
Oh, okay. Well, I want to say that I oppose both of these business improvement districts. All they are are ways for these organizations to take money out of the general fund of Los Angeles and give it to this elite group who basically have fascist policing, private in the bids. The city should dual-way with bids. There should be no more bids developed and especially dual-way with the East Hollywood bid. As far as the Granada Hills bid, that's a total mistake. And the bid in Encino, all it does, they're both racist. All they, all they want to do is, there's these business, white businessmen, that want to keep black people out of their neighborhoods. And what they do is set up these enforcement zones to race racist, for racist policing of their so-called neighborhoods. And I'd just like to say, it's an outrage that our money is wasted on these corrupt organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Herman. Item two in public comment, bitch.
Are you speaking on either of the two bit items?
Estoy hablando de las services en un enturbono entregado junto al resto de la comunidad, señor. Yo quiere hablar que no exista la exclusión para mí. Y para la elección de leyes de revolución.
Okay, this speaker is not on topic on either item, so let's go ahead and move on. Let's move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes. This is Richie Sержenko from People City Council and Sunrise Movement. Welcome back, everyone. Hope you had a nice vacation. I'd like to speak on items two and three.
Okay.
I think it's great that you all are, you know, back in house and talking about things like the Encino Commons property. You guys took three, three weeks off and guess what? You come back and things aren't any better. Why aren't they any better? Because you haven't done anything. You haven't done anything since March.
Can you get back on topic?
Speaker, you need to stick with the items.
Okay, I'll get back on topic. Streppen, you don't get to make the fucking rules of public comment.
Okay, you're off topic. Let's cut the speaker off and move to the next speaker.
They want, okay?
So I'd like to emphasize, we're trying to get through these speakers efficiently. You must be on topic all the time.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Yes, which of the bit items do you want to speak on?
DSP is a sham, another way to disguise and further target and police black and brown communities.
Okay, you're off topic, Speaker.
The LAPD is getting outright complaints-
Thank you.
Okay, so she's still off topic. I suggest we cut her off and move to the next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, Rob Quan. I'd like to speak on items two and three.
Go ahead.
You have two minutes.
Yeah, I just, again, I've said this before, but these business improvement districts are fundamentally undemocratic. It's a really kind of perverse idea in this country in some respects that we don't have voting that's accessible to everybody that's tied to property. But that's actually a rich history in America. It's just really sad to see our city continue on with this, especially when bids are fundamentally extractive. They pull away taxpayer money and divert them to these business improvement districts where they hire private security to operate, not unlike the secret police that you're decrying across the country right now. This is also a fundamentally rigged process because our city property is a default vote. So we, by default, vote to fund these bids and enact them. Lastly, I'd just like to say, it's really sad to see poor boss Bloomingfield want to have some dialogue before introducing an amendment, but he's forced to introduce it prematurely simply because you don't want to offer up public comment later in the meeting. That's all sad.
So I think you're off topic, Mr. Quan. Could you get back on topic?
Nah, that's all I got, Streppen. You have my time. Fuck you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jed Perry of the Streetwatch LA. I'd like to speak on items two and three.
Go ahead.
Again, bids are fundamentally undemocratic. They are tools of the ruling class to further justification, to further police violence, their own private police violence upon poor, black, and brown folks, and in particular helpless folks, as we're talking about all across the city. And that is the explicitly the goal of them, right? It's to literally get rid of poor people, private security guards. No, 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 we have to defund bids, defund the police, but bids are part of policing in this city. They're private police. We need to abolish bids, all of them. And hell no, MetroPharo, you're not getting a bid in Echo Park. It's not happening. I yield my time. Fuck you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Leana Wilson. Um, I'd like to speak on item one and give general public comment. Um, I'd like to echo what others were saying.
So, we're only doing items two and three, which are the two bid items. Did you want to speak on either of the bid items?
Yeah, sure. I'll speak on items, um, two and three. Um, I don't know what's wrong with you guys. I don't see, um, if you guys just don't want to be successful at your job.
Okay, so, please get on topic immediately.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Speaker? Okay, apparently there's no one on that line.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, this is Eric Chevron, items two and three.
Okay, go ahead.
First, I want to say to the attorney, you are absolute, just vile, the way you are interrupting people.
Please get on topic immediately.
Your constitutional right. No, 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 how is this constitutional? You're a lawyer.
All right, the speaker's off topic. Let's cut him off. Next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and, yes, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Zadahie. I would like to speak on items two and three.
Go ahead.
Um, hello?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, please, please start your comments.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to say fuck you. I'm interrupting you the way that you keep interrupting everyone trying to make a public comment.
Okay, you're off topic. Please get on topic immediately.
Fuck you.
No, all right, next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Gina Viola, and I'd like to speak on items two and three, please.
Please go ahead.
Thanks. So, bids are tools of your attempt to gentrify areas where you've greenlit developments. Bids are another form of policing in this city and an additional means to criminalize black, brown, and poor people in this city. You need to vote no on both of these bids and take measures to abolish all of the bids you've previously created as an attempt to continue to gentrify the entire of Los Angeles and leave it completely unaffordable for any of the working class, any of the service people to live in. Uh, also want to mention, your disdain for the public comment after a three-week vacation is showing.
Okay, you're off topic, Speaker. Could we please get on topic? Or are you done? Uh, she's hung up.
Please state your name and let us know whether you'd like to speak on two or three.
Yes, I'd like to speak on two and three. My name is Eric Previn, and these remarks are constitutionally protected. Business improvement districts are set up through businesses who pay a small assessment and then pool taxpayer, basically money that they would otherwise be paying for taxes to focus on specific needs, as many of the callers have said, that are in line with gentrification plans of some of these council members. And when people call in to speak about those issues and the sweeping that can be done and the services that are not provided and things like that, the rule of the lawyer, or the role of the lawyer, is not to interrupt those speakers during that period and during that hearing. In fact, that hearing, and I think there are two today, one in CD-12, John Lee, hashtag possible indictee, and CD-5, the richest of all districts, uh, may or may not make it based on this defective hearing because you keep interrupting people, sir. Mr. Farbell, you have a long tradition of violating people's rights.
Mr. Previn, I'm going to remind you to please stay on topic, items two and three, please.
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself? Was that Councilor Martinez? Thank you.
Mr. Previn, are you going to get back on topic?
That was the Council President, Mr. Previn. Please get on topic.
Yeah, I'm on topic. So, the business improvement districts, uh, make little meetings and take care of business. In Studio City, comparable to the ones that are being approved today, we can learn some things. Like, we can learn that business improvement districts have to share records like city agencies, and yet they don't like to. And that's why various activists have brought reminders to them in the form of cease and desist activities, and they comply when, because they don't have a choice. They have to follow the law. And that's what we like. We like it when folks follow the law. We also like it when the limited resources in Los Angeles are applied to the things that the people are after these days, which is something different than what bids typically provide. Bids serve as a kind of a private business force that work in the interest of the business. Now, we like businesses. It's not like we're against businesses. But we don't like the way the public gets shafted frequently in these ways, and the gentrification has pushed out Angelinos, people who live here and have lived here for a very long time and can't anymore because of the prioritization of the development groups.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, Michael Koenig, item two and three.
Please go ahead.
I am a homeowner in historic Sunset Square. I am white. I would be considered affluent. All the initiatives that bids are supposed to accomplish allegedly benefit people like me and our neighborhood. I've lived in Los Angeles for close to thirty years, and my observation is they do exactly the opposite of what they are allegedly intending to do. They are harmful to homeowners. They are harmful to the unhoused. They are harmful to working people. They are harmful to primarily people of color. And they are particularly pernicious because they have the veneer and the appearance of doing something positive and good when, in fact, they are doing the work of destruction and ruining our neighborhood. This council, elected by people like me, by your constituents, has shown consistently a willingness to be allied with the business community and the real estate developing community, voting in lockstep, usually unanimously, to approve these things. We have observed, in our Sunset Square neighborhood, the real downside of these kind of initiatives when you set up special enforcement cleaning.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on items two and three.
Go ahead. Please go ahead.
So, business improvement districts are fundamentally...
Anti-democratic institutions. They take...
Speaker, are you there?
Yeah, somebody can hear me?
Yep, please continue. We couldn't hear you for a second.
Oh, thank you. Well, uh, so, I'm fundamentally opposed to both business improvement districts. Business improvement districts are fundamentally undemocratic. They, uh, they concentrate power in a geographic area into the hands of the few. Uh, small businesses who fall below the bid levy threshold, although not liable to pay the bid levy, often price out of an area because bids tend to increase rental values. Larger businesses are most, more able to absorb these rent increases, particularly multiple stores, big bucks. I'm a cook in this city, and I can't, I can't live close to anywhere where I work because of business improvement districts that make the city inaccessible for people like me to live here. I know you want poor people like me to work here and serve you people, but we need to be able to actually live here. I can't come into the city and cook for you guys all the way the fuck from Rancho Cucamonga. That doesn't make any fucking sense. So, once you guys mobilize business improvement districts, you're trying to price everybody out for what, uh... Like media companies? Uh, high-tech earners from Apple and Amazon? Is that, that's, are you guys thinking you're going to populate this city when you guys price us all out with, uh, your business improvement district and all the polices? Uh, I've seen the results of business improvement districts where police come in and brutalize people. These are people who wouldn't have been there without these business improvement, this is a police officer, I mean. So, I, I don't see why the city council, which is supposed to be, according to Mayor Garcetti, the most progressive city council in the country, would support something so undemocratic like business improvement districts.
Thank you, Speaker.
Oh, I forgot to identi...
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I want to speak on item two and three.
Go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Leana Wilson. You cut me off earlier. I just want to say that I took off of my job today. I know you guys wouldn't know about a job because you don't go to a job. You take a vacation every couple of weeks. You haven't worked in a few years. I took my job off today to say some peace about item forty-six, but you will not let anyone speak about item forty-six.
So, you're not on topic, Speaker.
You will not let anyone speak about poor people, and if you want what people speak, we're going to be out of the house.
Okay, you're still off topic. I suggest we cut off the speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Yael Lipshut, items two and three, and general comment.
There's no general public comment, but you can speak on items two and three. Please begin.
Yes, I, I want to echo, um, the sentiments of many people who called regarding the role of real estate development and real estate LLCs in the decision-making of the council itself. Um, I'm speaking specifically with Mitchell Farrell, who's my councilman and mine, and the really serious conflict of interest that he, um...
So, Speaker, I don't quite understand how this is on item two and three. Would you please connect?
This is on, this is on topic because development constitutes thirty percent of fossil fuel.
No, 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 I'm sorry, Speaker. You're off topic. You're, you, this is, you're not talking to the bids.
Let me just, let me just finish. Development constitutes thirty percent of fossil fuel usage in the world.
So, sorry, Speaker, no. I've asked you three times now to connect this up, and yeah, I'm done. Let's move on to the next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to...
I don't think there's any...
Hello? Hello?
Yes.
Oh, okay, hi. Two and three. I'd like to speak on two and three.
Go ahead.
My name is Peggy Lee Kennedy, and I, uh, live next to a bid that was basically gerrymandered to, uh, go after unhoused people. And you know, these bids are inherently, uh, anti-poor, uh, and they work directly with the police. It, it's quite shocking that, uh, the city wants to invest in these sub-police, um, organizations with bet, with bids that, uh, protect properties and actually violate the rights of human beings. It, it's not progressive at all. It's wrong, and you should vote against these, that these, uh, young people are hired, and I mean, I feel for them. They're usually people of color, and they need a job, but they can't live anywhere near these bids, I'm sure. And then if they have a clean team, which is great, and they pay you enough for maybe to register the vehicle you live in. So, um, the bids are, they're going around, the police are telling them what to do. It's the craziest thing. These bids are bad. B-A-D. Capital B, capital A, capital D. And you should rethink the city you live in if you have to go around creating private security as some kind of solution to our problems. Maybe we need to come up with positive solutions, real solutions, like programs, services, housing, not these criminal acting bids that go after poor people and people of color. You should be ashamed of yourselves for continually doing these types of things. And I yield my time. F you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, my name's Joanna Swan. Um, I'd like to speak on items two and three, please.
Go ahead.
Hi, so, I'm an organizer with Street Watch LA. Um, seeing the potential formation of two more fucking bids in this city is horrific, and I know at this point y'all don't seem very concerned with the optics of what you're doing in any way. But much like LAPD's historical ties to chattel slavery, this is a Trojan horse for racialized banishment with direct ties to white supremacy and white vigilantism. I have unhoused friends who had their stuff destroyed by arson fires set by bid security. I have unhoused friends who've experienced targeted, anti-black harassment to the point of even being discussed, an individual unhoused person being discussed in a bid meeting full of developers and cops. I watch street vendors experience the same treatment, pushed out of their own damn communities by bids, which, by the way, are funded by businesses' tax dollars, our property tax dollars, from every business in the district, even if it's not a part of the bid. We need to fucking abolish these bids. I will never forget the trauma and the harassment that you will never be able to understand because you don't talk to unhoused people. You won another fucking lawsuit like in Hollywood when bid officers were literally kidnapping people illegally. Lest we forget the first bid meeting I went to when what was being discussed? Oh, yeah, we need to get more footbeats in downtown, in South Park, where there are literally ten unhoused people living. I can't believe the level of sociopathies at work today in this meeting. You should be so disappointed in yourself, Streffin, for silencing a woman, for fucking tone policing a woman. Fuck you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Speaker?
Hi, my name is Peter Clint. I'd like to speak on items two and three.
Go ahead. Please go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Um, you know, first off, uh, I'd like to echo the comments of, you know, many of the previous callers in a general opposition to the creation of additional bids within the city of Los Angeles. Um, you know, I live in downtown, um, and, you know, we have about nine of them within our area spending millions of dollars a year on private security forces, um, going around with batons, handcuffs, pepper spray, um, you know, actively encouraging, um, you know, the enforcement of small crimes. I mean, it's literally in their contracts to enforce ideas like broken windows policing, which has been fundamentally discredited. Um, you know, these are the sorts of things that if you actually want to be able to act on all the things that you've been talking about in the last month, if you want to actually, like, follow action, like, these are the moments and these are the decisions that you need to make. Um, you know, especially even in downtown, and we've seen bid support, um, you know, for corrupt projects from Jose Huizar. Um, we've seen them going to planning meetings, cheerleading these projects. Um, we saw it with the City Market LA project, which is on the agenda for later this evening. That was cheerleading by a bid in LA. They showed up to the meetings. They were cheerleading that project. Those developers gave tens of thousands of dollars to Jose Huizar to get the affordable housing in that project. You guys are voting on this, item nineteen today. Um, you know, the bids are funded by the property developers. It's only property owners who pay into that. The bids, the same people are then developing these properties, sending the bids as some sort of, like, idea of public support when they're completely non-representative of the public and the residents of these places. And they're sending these bids in to cheerlead their own corrupt projects like City Market LA, which is on the agenda, number nineteen today. You guys need to go much further than just vetoing and sustaining the mayor's veto.
Thank you, Speaker.
You need to completely reject that project.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's Camila. I'm just, uh, calling to speak, uh, against the bids on items two and three.
Go ahead.
Business, business improvement districts are, are very anti-poverty. Uh, when business improvement districts are approved, then all, all of the people who aren't business owners are suddenly criminalized by business owners who are only focused on increasing their property values, uh, and attracting, uh, higher income earners to these bids. And that's fundamentally racist. It's fundamentally, uh, anti-poverty. It's fundamentally anti-homeless. And it also encourages developers to use these bids to manufacture the support they need to get their corrupt projects through. these bids to manufacture the support they need to get their corrupt projects through. I mean, in LA, the Section 8 housing applications have been closed for way too long, and we have hotels being built in South Park instead of housing. I've worked in hotels in downtown, and they had to close down some of their restaurants because they didn't attract enough business. So developers are very good at selling the idea of these places as neighborhood economic centers and community centers. But in reality, that's just not how the people in LA live yet or probably ever will. We don't congregate at hotels. This isn't New York. You can't turn this city into something that isn't just because developers make really nice presentations with really cool visualizations of the really anti-poverty buildings that they want to build. And then these buildings will become blights on our city in decades when the economic support isn't there. The developers and consultants have already made all their money. They've already made you guys look like idiots. But then we have to deal with the fact that we don't have housing, and that we have all these hotels and business interests that don't actually serve the people who live here. You guys are trying to attract people who will never actually be here. You guys are never going to be able to achieve a city full of high-income workers where, I mean, I've seen even on the metro-
Thank you, Speaker.
Members, we're going to go ahead and table items number two and three for later in the meeting. Let's go ahead and vote on a couple of items, Madam Clerk. So why don't we go ahead and vote on items one through four?
And Madam President, if we're going to hold the public comment for items two and three, we should at this time just vote on items one and four.
Correct.
So if we'd like to vote on all items that have now had public comment and have not been called special?
Mm-hmm.
That would be items one, four, six through nine, 12, 15 through 28, 30 through 41, 43, 45, 47, and 48.
Okay, go ahead and call the roll on these items.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino.
Buscayino, yes.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Corretz.
Corretz, aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes. These items are approved.
Okay, let's move on to item number 10, which was called special by Mr. Corretz. Item 10, sir?
Yes, I just wanted to add some additional informal instructions to staff as we move this item forward, to consult with the city's food waste task force, with Wreckin' Parks, with Streets LA, and with the zoo, among others, to consider how we create a virtuous circle with our food waste. Whether we can compost our massive amounts of food waste to be used as fertilizer in our organic parks pilot program, whether we can use the compost in our medians, can we use zoo animal food waste for the same. The ultimate goal is actively drawing carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere and to create healthy soil everywhere possible around the city. And so if we can do that using our food waste, we should consider that as we move this item forward.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Corretz. Let's go ahead and call the roll on this item.
For item 10, Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino.
Buscayino, aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson.
Corretz.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number 11, which was called special by Mr. Corretz.
Yes, I just wanted to flag this for the council. We've been tracking a very concerning condition called pediatric inflammatory multi-system syndrome, which has been affecting children. When we introduced this motion, I think there were about 100 cases in the U.S. I believe none in Los Angeles. Now it's up to around 400 or so, and there are at least 15 in Los Angeles. This is a variation of COVID, apparently, and it hits children's systems very hard. There are a few deaths, none in Los Angeles yet, but I believe this is still serious enough to track it and get a report back. And as we've seen with COVID, things can change pretty dramatically, especially as we're looking at some school districts going back to school and LAUSD debating when they go back to school. This could dramatically increase the spread of this particular disease and should be taken into account.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corretz. Let's go ahead and vote on this item. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino.
Buscayino, yes.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number 29, called special by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. So item 29 is a motion I introduced back in April when it was becoming apparent very quickly that masks, like the one I'm holding up, and plastic gloves were starting to be seen in the gutters in several neighborhoods, including my own. And that has continued with COVID-19 and the increasing proliferation of personal protective equipment. Traditionally, a lot of these materials were used and continue to be used in the medical field, and they've long been managed and regulated accordingly to keep medical personnel safe. However, COVID-19 has changed that because now everyday people are using some of the same traditional materials that are used in hospitals to prevent COVID-19. And of course, everyone should wear a mask going out in public and to slow the spread of COVID-19. A recent study estimates that globally, 129 billion with a B face masks and 65 billion gloves are being used monthly. That's across the world. And although these gloves, masks, and wipes are necessary to keep us safe from coronavirus, they're also made out of plastics. And this council has done a lot of- taken a lot of action in relation to plastics in the oceans and the fact that our coastal city and plastic straws, et cetera. Prior to COVID, it was estimated that 8 million metric tons of plastic get added to our oceans every year, not accounting for the approximate 150 million metric tons already in our oceans. And of course, the Pacific Ocean is severely affected by plastic waste. The addition of billions of improperly disposed PPE items will further damage our global ecosystems and raise serious health safety risks. This could make the issue of plastic straws in our oceans and other plastic materials pale in comparison to our dealing with COVID-19 and the plastic waste brought upon that. And if my little small corner of the world in Glassell Park, and I see gloves and masks on the ground and in our gutters every day, then imagine what that's multiplied like across a city of 469 square miles. We must act. As one of the largest cities, millions of people in Los Angeles are wearing single-use PPE, and we want to encourage them to continue doing so, but there is a serious threat to our oceans, and we must pick up potentially contaminated PPE that is left on our sidewalks and roads. So my office is working closely with sanitation on how to deal with this and what special measures we may need to take to collect all of this discarded material. To protect our environment and safeguard against safety concerns, we need to really educate the public on self-disposing of these materials and doing so properly. For example, many people don't know that PPE cannot be recycled at conventional recycling facilities because the potentially infected PPE can infect workers. Education helps prevent additional and unnecessary pollution to the Atlantic River, beaches, and our oceans. Education is key to this change. People must be aware and conscious about the importance of proper PPE where disposal is in order for enforcement or fines to be considered. I would really argue that we discuss ACE citations first before we start fining folks. I think education is key here, and that should be the approach we make. Education and then facilitating this type of waste so that it is available to folks out in public who discard it. So I'm recommending that we create an augmented public education plan in coordination with hospitals, clinics, and other medical providers, and really any retail outlet, online or otherwise, that are marketing these PPE amenities. I look forward to seeing the Los Angeles Sanitation Department report on the disposal process of medical waste citywide, and thanks sanitation for being present, just in case there are any questions. So colleagues, with all of that, we don't need to take our eyes off of our environment as we work to slow or stop the spread of coronavirus. This is not a trade-off we have to make. We can do both. So I ask for your aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for bringing this forward. I think we are seeing a lot of this problem, and as you said, we can't take our eye off the ball on this in terms of the environmental and health impacts. I have a thought as we are having this discussion, and nothing formal, but I would just ask that sanitation and others take a look at the fact that supermarkets and the oil industry have used this as an opportunity and an excuse to bring back plastic bags by the hundreds of millions in Los Angeles. And so despite the fact that we have had our law in place changing this, there are now supermarkets which have used unproven science to state that reusable bags cannot be brought into supermarkets and used safely, and that they must use plastic bags. So almost every supermarket has gone in this direction, and I'd like to ask sanitation to take a look at this issue as well, informally, as we go forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corretz. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. That's a really great point. I know that some markets, including my neighborhood Target, will now allow you again to bring in your reusable bags if you will bag your purchases yourself. So I just want constituents to know that, and I think that anyone who's listening now, talk to the store managers where you go shop so that we can counter that false argument that the plastics and oil industry are making so that, you know, plastic waste can proliferate our city and all these uses once again. We don't want to take a giant step backward based on this false pretense that we're being marketed by the oil and plastics industry. So, in other words, this is a way of saying that everyday people who frequent stores can get involved right now with making the case, and it's a pretty environmentally conscious trade-off to say, hey, I'll bag it myself, but I want to use my reusable bags. And thank you for your comment, Mr. Corretz.
Seeing no other members on the queue, Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the roll on this item, item 29.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino.
Buscayino, aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Dawson, yes.
Corretz.
Yes.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item 42, as amended by Mr. Bonin. Let's go ahead and call the roll on this item.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino.
Buscayino, aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes. This item is adopted as amended.
Okay, let's move on to item 44. Members, we're going to have two votes on this item. Let's go ahead and vote on whether to substitute. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Thank you, Madam President, and this first vote is whether to substitute. Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson. Corretz.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes. To substitute.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the substitute motion. Open the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino.
Yes.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson. Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Yes, yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes. Substitute motion is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item 46. This was called special by Mr. Buscayino and amended by Mr. Blumenfield. So why don't we go ahead and start with Mr. Buscayino?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, members. Colleagues, I want to bring you back to March 17th in the early days of the COVID-19 pandemic. This council adopted motion 72-P-A, council file number 20-0147, which, among other actions, directed sanitation to suspend during the emergency declaration the provision of LAMC 5611 that requires tents to come down during daytime hours. Now, this was done in response to the guidance from the LA County Department of Public Health that we received during that very council meeting. Now, although this motion only addressed suspending the daytime tent ban up-
The photos that you see before you, again, were taken after a basic care team cleanup. And I do have residents that abut these encampments in the Harbor City area. The majority of what we're talking about is not personal property, members. They are broken pallets, as you see before you, parts, door frames, scrap wood, scrap metal, and more that has been building up for the past 134 days. This is clearly junk, plain and simple. And what happens when you have piles of highly flammable junk stacked together? You get homes for rats that carry diseases like typhus, worsening our public health crisis. And you get fires that spread quickly that could kill multiple people, as you see in these photos here. Now, colleagues, this clearly is not sustainable. Furthermore, I want to share with you that I believe we are misinterpreting the guidance from LA County Public Health, which states as follows, quote, "If individual housing options are not available, allow people who are living unsheltered or in encampments to remain where they are. Clearing encampments can cause people to disperse throughout the community and break connections with service providers. This increases the potential for infectious disease spread," end quote. CARE Plus cleanups don't. They do not clear encampments. They remove trash, bulky items, and health hazards, like used needles, and they sanitize sidewalks with a disinfectant. Those experiencing homelessness and everyone else who is not a city employer or contractor are required to temporarily leave the cleanup zone and after being provided with both posted notice and a 30-minute grace period to gather belongings and move to the next block, similar to street sweeping. We ask the public to temporarily leave so that effective cleaning on the street can occur. Now, the difference between permanently clearing an encampment and causing displacement, as CDC and Department of Public Health cautioned against, versus briefly requiring those experiencing homelessness to move from a single block so that heavy equipment can be safely used to remove bulky items and trash, like the ones that you see before you, and add a disinfectant that may be applied to the streets and sidewalks. Now, after the cleanup has concluded, they're allowed to return. Individuals in the encampments are allowed to return, just like cars may return after a street sweeper has left. Now, you heard from the callers, which I disagree with the callers. We're not asking people to take their tents down every single day. We're not asking individuals... We're not taking essential personal property. And we're not asking LAPD to arrest or ticket anyone. We are simply seeking to resume scheduled weekly comprehensive CARE Plus cleaning around a bridge home shelter only. Now, after the July... Over the July recess, rather, thankfully, there's been several more bridge home shelters that have opened, and several more are scheduled to come online by the end of this month. And in total, we'll have 24 sites citywide. As we all know, there was a lot of skepticism about a bridge home shelters, and many of us faced strong community opposition. Part of the deal made with our residents, as proposed by the mayor, was that neighborhoods surrounding a bridge home shelters would receive weekly comprehensive CARE Plus cleanups. We need to follow through on that commitment, members. And we do so by demonstrating 100% compassion, caring, humane approach, all while falling in compliance with CDC guidelines. We have before you, members, Gabe Miranda from the Sanitations Livability Services Division and Chief Howard Wong from Watershed Protection Division. They are here before us. Madam President, if I can ask you to loop them in? I don't know if they're there in council chambers, or do we have to bring them in via Zoom?
Yeah, we're probably going to have to bring them in via Zoom. They're not here in council chambers, so give us a couple of minutes. Oh, I think they're already here. So hold on for just a second. Let me verify that.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, we've got two staff members from sanitation. If you can please let them in. Identify yourselves. And Mr. Buscaino, did you have questions for them?
Yes, thank you. If we can, just before I ask for your I-vote, members, I want to ask the representative from sanitation to walk us through on how sanitation moves forward on their CARE Plus protocols, and what's the difference between a CARE Plus and the care team that goes out on the spot cleaning?
Hi, good afternoon, members. Gabe Miranda with LA Sanitation and Environment Livability Services Division. So CARE and CARE Plus, prior to the pandemic and obviously the instruction from council back in March 17, we're providing comprehensive cleanup operations. And the difference between CARE and CARE Plus is that CARE Plus provide the 24-hour posted notice. The CARE Plus teams have a larger footprint to address the larger, denser, chronic encampment locations and include sanitizing of the public right of way. Their CARE Plus teams are also dedicated to providing one day a week of service to the a bridge home service areas. So since March, the CARE Plus teams have continued to meet their commitment to servicing these areas, but have followed the instructions and recommendations from council and obviously the CDC. So the CARE Plus teams are also responsible for collection and removal of illegal dumping citywide. The care teams, which one is dedicated to each council district and one focused on the Alley River, provide four-day-a-week service to the a bridge home service areas. They also address trash removal, line-of-sight health hazards, and gain compliance for ADA ingress egress. The care teams are also responsible for conducting trash collection. We deployed over 500 street receptacles, and they manage and service those receptacles daily as well.
Thank you for that, members. I asked for an I-vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm glad that we did not consider this as a Rule 23 before council recess, because I think it needed some public input, and I think it needed some deliberation. My first issue with the motion before us is that what it states is, on its face, factually inaccurate. The motion states that the council action of March 17 relative to suspending comprehensive CARE Plus cleanups be amended to, and then the instruction. That's not what the council did in March 17. I got that motion right in front of me right now. And what it said is, instruct LA sanitation and other relevant agencies to suspend enforcement during the emergency declaration of the provision of 5611 that requires tents to come down during daytime hours, with a number of exceptions that this body asked for, ADA access not within 10 feet of an operable driveway. So what the motion is asking for misrepresents what the motion was. It's trying to reverse something that this council did not do. It's also premised on the idea that the CARE and CARE Plus efforts have halted. They haven't. And there are regular, on social media, CPRA postings of where the cleanups are happening in each of our districts. So not only does this call for us to reverse something we didn't do, it's asking for something to be done that is continuing to happen. It isn't happening right. I mean, the CARE and CARE Plus teams are not what they were supposed to be. They were unveiled with a splashy press conference, and the number of us attended is going to be a police-free approach to cleanups, and that has not happened. That has been largely reversed, despite efforts to try to keep it to its initial promise. And the cooperative approach towards cleaning up has not, to my perspective, happened sufficiently well. When this item was before us in March, there were a number of speakers, and I believe this was the last time we were together in person in chambers, there were a number of speakers who spoke and said, yeah, we want the sidewalks cleaned. We want the trash picked up. Come and pick up the trash. And still, my impression is, we still have not created a system where we say to people in an encampment, hey, let's all make this easy. Let's put out all the trash you want taken right here, or let's give you additional dumpsters and trash cans, and then we can come by, and then we don't have to fight and get into a negotiation over every piece of property. If the issue here is a concern that bulky items, or as Mr. Buscaino says, junk, is not being picked up, the issue here is not what the council did in March 17 in deciding to take a public health approach. The issue here is with our unenforceable 5611 bulky item pickup rules, which we have discussed as a result of court action. That's not something that is going to change by this discussion or this attempt to reverse something that we did not do. I also say that when we heard this in March as well, there were people who said, please, yes, we would like you to clean the sidewalks, and said, many people will voluntarily move their tents if the sidewalk is going to get cleaned. What they complained about was that what had been happening frequently is that the city would post that they were going to be cleaning the sidewalk. People would move their stuff at the posted hour, and then the city wouldn't clean the sidewalk again and again and again, which started causing a refusal on some people's part to move their stuff because, you know, Lucy had pulled the football away from them way too many times. And so it was a broken system, and it's still a broken system that still needs fixing. I'd also say, you know, I would dispute the idea that the intention of some of the cleanups, not all, because some of them are genuine efforts that people in encampments have requested to get trash out of the way to keep what is, you know, their home for the moment safe and clean. The idea behind the bridge was to do the cleanups sufficiently frequently that it would discourage people from being in that area. So it is actually, according to the bridge vision, which is not implementable under some of the court decisions and the CDC guidelines, what was to actually move people. And I would point out, there's a very big difference between street sweeping and this. There's a difference between cars and people. And it's also worth noting that we've suspended enforcement of street sweeping for the time being during this pandemic. And what I think the council did right in March is we voted to listen to Department of Public Health and CDC, and we said we would follow that advice until the end of the emergency order, at which point we would then consult with public health experts on what the right approach would be. So I think that continues to be the right approach. It's a politically difficult one because it has, along with the other, you know, perfect storm of circumstances, created bigger encampments and lots of bulky items left on the street that may be yes or no related to the encampments or be illegal dumping. That has occurred, but what we're... I'm still confused about what we're being asked to do here today because the care teams are functioning now, and calling for a suspension of the care teams is not something we did in March. So again, we're being asked to reverse something that we didn't do. So I remain confused, and so I'm a no voter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a good conversation to have. And, you know, Mr. Bonin, we're still getting requests from people who called in today. I heard a few folks saying, we don't mind cleaning up at the encampments. So I think for the sake of conversation, we need to just take a deep breath and realize that I think all of us, and even the majority of the callers, want the same thing. And certainly, the folks living in the encampments who are experiencing homelessness that I've spoken with are very welcoming of interacting and having the offer of services, and then having sanitation crews come through and sanitize the area. So I think sometimes we put unwittingly obstacles in front of ourselves with some of the points of conversation that we engage in, when in reality, I think most folks want the same thing. No one wants to criminalize the homeless. We want to make sure that every touch we make, there is someone there offering services and/or open up a case to get them additional assistance, whether it be temporary housing, shelter, and a pathway to permanent housing. Of course, under the coronavirus and the emergency order, everything has changed, but there's certainly not the impression in my district that the CARE Plus teams are operating anywhere. It's been our experience that we have to work directly with sanitation to come to an area and sanitize it without disturbing the person who is experiencing homelessness. So I'm just wondering, again, for the sake of conversation, if sanitation could address this, if we could all kind of engage in this conversation. Number one, we don't want to cause displacement. That's one of the big claims, causing displacement. We certainly don't want anyone's personal items to be destroyed. We here haven't heard any claims of that in recent times, and even previous to that, it was sporadic. But we know it happens, and that is something that we should absolutely take great care that it doesn't happen. We could even go so far as to when do we approach a cleanup, and I do mean a cleanup and sanitation effort at an encampment that doesn't cause displacement, doesn't require someone to leave an area, but it makes the area safer for the person experiencing homelessness and the general public. We could add other components. In other words, we can redefine what CARE and CARE Plus means for ourselves in this reality of COVID, in this reality of a greater awareness for a more humane, compassionate approach in general on all things homelessness. Those don't have to trade one for the other. It's also an opportunity, if we can do some sort of weekly posted attention to areas that are indicative of the photos that Mr. Buscaino showed us, that we could absolutely have LASSA caseworkers there every time as well, where currently they are not. So there could be an added amenity offered, and again, offering another pathway to wellness. Along with, if a tent is contaminated and we see contamination, that LASSA offers replacement tents. Furthermore, just like a renter, if they invoke COVID as a reason they can't pay rent, if someone is experiencing homelessness and we follow the CDC guidelines, and that is don't disturb them, they don't... We don't have to make them move anywhere. We could take great care in sanitizing the area around them without having them to comply to relocate on another block. In other words, we can do this more carefully and more sensitively. but it makes the area safer for the person experiencing homelessness and the general public. We could add other components. In other words, we could, we can redefine what CARE and CARE PLUS means for ourselves in this reality of COVID and this reality of a greater awareness for a a more humane compassionate approach in general on all things homelessness. Those don't have to trade one for the other. It's also an opportunity if we can do some sort of weekly posted attention to areas that are indicative of the photos that Mr. Buscagno showed us, that we could absolutely have LASSA caseworkers there every time as well, where currently they are not. So there could be an added amenity offered. And again, offering another pathway to wellness. Along with, if a tent is contaminated and we see contamination, that LASSA offers replacement tents. Furthermore, just like a renter, if they invoke COVID as a reason they can't pay rent, if someone is experiencing homelessness and we follow the CDC guidelines, and that is don't disturb them, they don't, we don't have to make them move anywhere. We could take great care in sanitizing the area around them without without having them to comply to relocate on another block. In other words, we can do this more carefully and more sensitively and more humanely while helping folks who aren't getting that regular offer now. So those are just some of the the things I wanted to put out there. And also, when when we do go out there and we see this humanitarian crisis facing us, this this health crisis facing us, where is county health? Are they on some of the calls? Are they on some of the outreach? In my experience, they're not unless we cajole, twist arms and and, you know, push real hard. So there are lots of factors that we need to discuss here. And it's not just about the sites, to me, where the Bridge Home shelters are, although that's what's before us of the moment. But we know that encampments everywhere and that people who live in them need special attention. And I do mean supportive attention and not the kind of attention that causes trauma or displacement. I mean, I think that's the language that everyone's talking here. So I I would like to have the space for that conversation.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Well, Mr. Sadio, I just am putting that out there that I I I think what happens is sometimes we just get stuck, that there's one absolute way forward. When we're a council, we can redefine what our CARE and CARE PLUS teams do so that the folks who are in distress and are concerned that we heard from calling in today, we can make sure that those activities that were being claimed aren't happening or don't happen. So I just want to put that out for the sake of discussion. And I would I would love to continue this because I think it's a discussion we need to absolutely have. We're not serving those who are experiencing homelessness at the moment with neglect. And we're not service serving anyone else who needs to use the public right of way either. We're kind of in the business of not serving anyone with our current approach. And I think that's what motivated Mr. Buscagno to bring this forward. So that's, I wanted to put that out there for discussion and see if we can come to some sort of solution.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Buscagno, for raising this issue. That remains to be one of the main things that at least in Council District 8, we get calls about about even during the the pandemic because folks are even more concerned about encampments near their house, whether they live near a Bridge Home or not. They're more concerned than they might have been before because of the health health concern. I'm want to request from sanitation some, if you all could rescue me from some of my confusion. So the you you started off by saying we were doing these CARE and CARE PLUS cleanups before March 17. In March seven, in on March 17, we took a vote that said we were going to suspend the idea that we cleared encampments. So we cleared out both the debris. We cleaned them, but we also required people to move and their things to move. And so my understanding of what we said on the 17th was, we're not, we're going to stop having people move. I didn't understand that we were going to stop cleaning. And so I just want to get clear from you, what is your understanding and what actually happened?
Mr. Harris Dawson, who are you asking that question of? Staff or Mr. Buscagno?
Representative of sanitation.
Okay, sanitation, can you please respond to Mr. Harris Dawson?
Sure, council members. So as of March 17, it was instructed to temporarily suspend the enforcement of tents under LMC 5611 Procedure 10. So not enforcing tents between the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM, as well as not conducting the posted cleanups, which would be an enforcement of of tents, having to do a comprehensive cleanup in which individuals would leave the area while we perform cleanup. However, the cleanups have not stopped. We are still doing cleanup operations of trash, debris, line of sight health hazards, and then the the accessibility issues that I referenced as far as ADA and ingress egress.
So how would what we're what was proposed today change what you're currently doing? Is it is it the is it the thing that the people would take down their tents while you're cleaning? Or is it something broader than that?
Yeah, so it would be the posted comprehensive cleanup operation, which would allow us to do a comprehensive cleanup on the right of way, which includes the sanitizing, where individuals would leave the area momentarily while we perform that cleanup.
Mr. Harris Dawson, if that helps.
How long? One more question, Mr. Buscagno. Momentarily, what what does that mean in terms of time?
So it varies depending on the number of encampments at any location. So it could be, it could vary in time. It's just really based on the particular need of that area.
How how what's the longest it would last?
It could go anywhere. On average, I would say, if I was putting an average, anywhere between two to three hours is a is a CARE PLUS operation.
Thank you for the average. So I'm asking you the longest.
The longest could be the entire day.
That concludes my questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. That's the line of questioning that I wanted to to ask the sanitation reps. So how many CARE PLUS cleanups have taken place since March 17 in and around Bridge Home sites?
So the CARE PLUS operations are still ongoing, just with the restrictions of not doing comprehensive cleanup where we're enforcing any tents.
So then that would, so it would be more of a CARE-type cleanup than a CARE PLUS? Correct?
Correct.
Right. So, you know, the the difference between the two is just the level of comprehension, the the comprehensive nature of the cleanup. So it does make a difference. So I just, I I don't want to, I don't want to mix the two. I want to be very clear about what we're actually doing here. And we're not talking about the level of comprehensive sanitized cleanup efforts that are associated with CARE PLUS. And I and I want to just, you know, Mr. Harris Dawson, I think, to to underscore what your question about the length of time that it takes. When we cleared out Paxton and Bradley, which had 67 individuals living in homelessness encamped in that location, as a result of relocating them to the Project Room Key locations, it took a full week of cleanup at that location, tagging. You know, we we worked very closely with sanitation. Even Enrique went out to the site so that we could work very closely with LASSA and managing everything and how we noticed it and how we worked at that site. But I just want to be really clear. You know, since March 17, we have not had CARE PLUS. And it was only with respect to encampments that where individuals were being relocated, as my understanding, as part of Project Room Key, that we were able to then facilitate a comprehensive cleanup. Is that correct, Gabe?
That's correct.
Okay. So, you know, I just, I want to be really clear, guys, because the 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 comprehensive sanitizing of the area is still very important for our unhoused Angelinos. And and that, you know, that is not happening. So let's just be really clear about what is and is not happening. And the only way that it is happening is when it's involved with and associated with the Project Room Key effort. So I just want to be really clear for everyone because I, you know, I I was getting confused as well about what's happening where. And I don't want to, let's not mix apples and oranges with the type, with the level of cleanups that we're talking about with respect to this and what was adopted March 17 and the instructions of how sanitation is actually proceeding with respect to our directives from that from that date. So I just, I want to be really clear about that. That said, I just opened up a a Bridge Home site. And, you know, when we talk about the levels of cleanups that our communities and our constituents are seeking for the purposes of maintaining safety and security of the areas, given the COVID-19, that that sent a type that those disinfectants of that area, I think is important for everyone. It's why we went through the, you know, laborious task of even issuing and delivering hands handwashing stations at all these locations. So I I think all of those things are important. So I I just don't want us to lose sight of that and the importance with that, particularly with respect to the to the locations in and around where we're providing Bridge Housing. So, thank you, Gabe.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Ru?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I really appreciate this conversation because I think my previous colleagues asked all clarified what I was going to say. Because, yes, as Councilman Rodriguez says, CARE PLUS is not happening. I don't know what we're going to call these things, but CARE PLUS is not happening, as Monica Rodriguez stated. However, I do know whether we call it CARE or whether we call it spot cleanups. And I think, as Councilman O'Farrell stated, both the community, both the encampments, everyone is agreeable with helping clean up trash, picking up trash around encampments, which is still happening. As a matter of fact, it happened in my district in the Valley Side on this past Monday. And, you know, and this is why I also support bringing porta potties and hygiene stations to encampments to make sure our unhoused neighbors stay sanitary and have support services and 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 the not whatnot. But however, when it comes to this issue, I know this is a very contentious issue, but it is very quite simple. Public health experts from both our Public Health Department and the CDC has made it clear, absolutely clear, that encampment sweeps during a pandemic are a bad idea. And I think that was iterated by, I think it was Councilman Bonin, because moving our unhoused neighbors around while they're trying to say stay safer at home is unsafe for them and unsafe for the community. So I I think this is a public health directive about actually moving encampments or if we want to say cleaning up tents or removing tents and displacing our unhoused neighbors, because that's not what's going to help them or the community during this pandemic. Because what we do know, what keeps people safe and stops homelessness, are homes. So what I want us to focus on is spending less time and money on sweeps, on comprehensive sweeps, but rather more on building the housing and the resources that actually solve this problem. So I will not go against the guidance of our public health experts. And so I will not be voting to reinstate 5611 or the special enforcement zone today.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too appreciate the the conversation and comments by by all. I'm inclined, however, to support the motion that we resume these cleanups. You know, we're doing the public support housing, we're doing Bridge Housing, safe parking, Room Key, creating sanitary stations. I'm even considering some pallet housing as a path for housing our 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 homeless homeless neighbors. But we also have to put some focus on cleanup. We got to put some focus on cleanup. And I think the CARE PLUS is that answer. We have to be able to remove trash and bulky items. You know, I'm not talking about moving folks away from the encampment. They know how to stay encamped, you know, but they can certainly push trash and debris and bulky items and mattresses and and tables out for for pickup and for cleanup. And I think we got to, we got to do that. We got to prioritize certainly the the health and sanitation, not only of the encampment, but also the surrounding neighbors. And so it's it's difficult, but I think it has had some success. We need, we we pushed the 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 programs, the Bridge programs with promises for cleanups, regular cleanups. I think we ought to resume those, and I think we ought to be positively aggressive in doing it. As I said, creating a safer environment, not just for the encampments, for those who are homeless, but also for residents who are in the proximity of these encampments. So I I support the motion by Councilman Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Blumenfield?
Thank you. I hear what, everyone here is making good arguments, and I think that there is a way to to land this plane, so to speak. And that I I do say, I don't think we're talking about, you know, one of my colleagues was mentioning encampment sweeps. I think that's different than CARE PLUS, that we're not talking about sweeps and and moving people out. We're talking about trying to have enhanced cleanup. And, you know, at the end of the day, the most important thing is we need to get people housed. We need to get people off the streets and into housing. And the question is, how do we do that? One of the best ways we do that is by creating Bridge Homes, pallet shelters, and other places for people to go. But when we create created the last set, we made promises to the community that those areas would not become magnets for more encampments and for the buildup of of items and trash. And we know that that does happen. It's happening at Project Room Key sites, it's happening at other places. That's a a promise that we made with the community that we want to keep so that we will be able to get less resistance as we try to build more housing and more Bridge Homes and more shelters, shelter beds. But I get it in terms of the health and safety issues because you don't want to be moving people around when we're in the middle of a pandemic. So that's why I I put that amendment forward. Because I think that one way to kind of thread this needle is to say, okay, we need to do these CARE PLUS cleanups, which are not sweeps, but they're they are a little bit more of a cleanup, and they require someone to leave for an hour, two hours, three hours. When is it okay for someone to leave for a couple of hours? Well, when you look at the stages, when we get to stage three, which is the higher-risk workplaces, people are dining indoors, they're going to the gyms, they're doing all sorts of things, a lot more intensive than being asked to walk down the block. So if we're really focused on the public health aspect of things, if we amend this to authorize Bureau of Sanitation to resume CARE only when we get to stage three, then I think we are, we are honoring any sort of health risk. Because when you look at stage three, a lot of the stage three activities are a lot more risky than than walking down the block for a couple of hours while and while your area is cleaned. And hopefully, the cleaning is a is a health issue. So I get it, it's a little, you know, it it could be arbitrary in the sense of just doing it now and and going back to the full CARE PLUS. But if we link it to a real healthcare marker, you know, then then to me, it makes more sense. So that's why I put forward that amendment to resume the CARE PLUS activities. And I know, Mr. Bonin, you said that you think they're already going on. If they're already going on, then this should, then there should be no reason to oppose this. But I think the reality is that they're not going on in the in the in the in the sense that they were beforehand. And the idea here is to make them go on in the sense that they were beforehand, where they are allowed to ask people to move for a couple of hours in order to do a comprehensive cleaning. And once we get to stage three, I think the health issues really are cleared. And so that's why I put that forward. And I would ask for your support of that amendment. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. So there's a, there's a big question here about whether or not CARE PLUS is still going on. And the department has said that it is. It's clear that a number of members of the council don't think CARE PLUS, as they want it to be, is happening. Each of us has a different expectation of what we want CARE PLUS to be. I would like CARE PLUS to be what we promised it was going to be when the council voted to to take LAPD out of it and make it more of a cooperative approach with people who are living in encampments. It's supposed to be public health driven. When we are, when we have a motion before us that says reinstate CARE PLUS, that doesn't mean anything, given that we all have a different understanding of what CARE PLUS is. If there's a motion that that or an amendment that says this is precisely what we would like to have happen that is not happening now, and it is not violative of Department of Public Health guidelines, then that's a, that's a, that's a reasonable conversation to have. I'd love to have a conversation about actually getting LAPD out of it and doing the public health approach, as as we initially said we were going to do. But but right now, there there the the motion before us by saying reinstate CARE PLUS, which in title exists right now, doesn't tell us what we're asking the department to do. And I don't think we can vote affirmatively on something that is is that vague. I mean, it's almost a a placeholder or sort of an opportunity I mean, it, it's almost a, a placeholder or sort of a, an opportunity to cert, to do, you know, fourteen or fifteen different independent black ops operations where we all do something, uh, a little bit different. And I think we need to give people clear standards. So, uh, I, I'd like to see the motion actually clearly state what it is it, it wants to do. Because simply by saying it wants to do Care Plus, it doesn't, it doesn't say anything. And the fact that the department says it's doing Care Plus, and some people say, no, you're not, I think is evidence of that. Thank you.
Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'd like to perhaps muddy the water even a little bit further, if I could, and just point out, uh, number one, I agree with, with, uh, the concept as articulated by Mr. Buscaino. Um, obviously, the trash that we're seeing is, is a health hazard and a hazard that, uh, in some cases, the occupants of, uh, encampments themselves recognize and would like to correct. Um, my sense, when we started talking about this and placing them around, um, uh, bridge housing, uh, locations, was that the attention be sort of informally, um, at, at least, uh, in the thought process of some, that if you kept cleaning them up, that it would be enough of a nuisance and eventually some of these encampments might leave. Um, that might have been a goal, you know, quite a while ago. Right now, I think we have the opposite goal. How can we clean these encampments up without having anybody feel compelled to leave? And I'm not sure if there's a diff, way to differentiate between those two approaches. I do know that in some cases, all along the way when we've cleaned up encampments, not all of the folks, uh, either got into a program or returned to their space, but may have found they were getting too much attention and just moved to other locations. Uh, we clearly don't want that, that's bad health policy. So how we do this in a way that results in the least possible displacement is, I think, one of the things we're looking at, um, and we should be looking at. Uh, how do we just keep them as, as clean and sanitary as possible, but not lose track of the homeless that we are trying to work with and get into services and not have them move into different encampments and have the potential, uh, for greater spedit, spread of the virus?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, Mr. Buscaino, let's not leave this conversation without a solution. Uh, and whatever that's going to take, because everyone's right. Everyone who has spoken is right, with the exception of, of a few comments I've heard, but pretty much everyone's on the same page. Um, and for that matter, the callers also, um, have a real concern as it relates to the term sweeps. So what I'd like to do is get some assurances from sanitation. Um, assurances that as per the city council decision way back in March, that we removed, uh, the LAPD from the scheduled cleanups, um, that that is and will be followed. And then in terms of the claims about sweeps, which I don't use because, um, I've gone to the Care, uh, and Care Plus cleanups before COVID and have never witnessed a sweep. I've witnessed very, very, um, compassionate approaches, uh, with LASSA while, where everything i- is explained in terms about, of what's going to happen next. So I wanna hear sanitation's perspective on that term, sweeps versus cleanups, because we, we do not need to live in this either-or world where we just fight about semantics all the time. There are concerns, legitimate concerns by the callers, about people's personal, uh, identification and other personal elements get lost or discarded, et cetera. That needs to be addressed. We need to earn the trust of folks that we don't do sweeps, that we, we clean up and sanitize these areas that need it for everyone involved. So, uh, to, to Gabe and sanitation, could you address cleanups versus sweeps?
Thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell. I'm gonna turn it over to our Chief Environmental Compliance Inspector, uh, Chief Howard Wong.
Good afternoon, everybody, council members. Uh, thank you. Mitch O'Farrell, hello, sir. Again, sanitation is not operating in the, under sweeps or in that notion. Uh, prior to COVID, we were conducting posted notice of cleanups. So these are not sweeps, these are postings well in advance, a very minimal twenty-four hours. We do have standard operating protocols that identify our steps, what needs to take as far as encampment cleanups, notifications. We work with our partner agencies, LASSA, LE Family Housing, et cetera. Uh, during the cleanup operation, yes, we do identify health hazards out there. Our environmental compliance inspectors will do that. Uh, anything that needs to be packed, excuse me, bag tagged and stored as far as personal property, we follow our standard operating protocols to that effort to ensure that any individuals who are experiencing homelessness, their items are left in the public right-of-way that are not deemed a health hazard, we will definitely store that to give them an opportunity to reclaim that property within ninety days.
All right, um, so we have different dynamics at play, uh, at these Care and Care Plus cleanups. One dynamic is compliance. Folks who are sure, you know, I'll, I'll move down the street while you do what you need to do, and we appreciate it. Uh, you have other dynamics, especially with COVID, where it, to follow the CDC guidelines, we might need to condition some of these, um, posted cleanups, uh, in relation to folks who declare a need to stay put if they feel some sort of, um, threat, uh, based on, you know, threat of COVID-19, whatever it may be. So how do we incorporate those concerns? And can something like that be accommodated when we do a posted cleanup day of action? As it relates to the CDC guidelines specifically, not to disrupt someone, could we bring, uh, temperature checks? Could we do COVID-19 testing on site? Again, I ask this rhetorically, where's the county? Uh, could we involve the fire department to, to do some COVID testing along with it? In other words, could we make it more than, we're just gonna post and show up and clean the area, we're also going to offer real assistance and, and services?
Yes, Councilmember O'Farrell. Um, one of the things that we are exploring is pulling together and synchronizing our city resources, um, including the infrastructure that we currently have in the Mobility Services Division. This includes bringing our mobile hygiene unit to the forefront of our Care Plus operations and providing the necessary showers and bathroom services. Also, the collaboration that you mentioned with LEFD, who is doing mobile COVID testing. So those are all great points as it relates to bringing, uh, a, a full train of services to the Care Plus operation.
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, I feel that we could get complete unanimity on this if we could, uh, have this very simple, basic list of conditions during COVID so that we can continue the Care Plus operations that focus on health, well-being, and sanitizing areas and hauling away discarded items that need to be hauled away. The pictures that Mr. Buscaino sent are real. We've all seen it in our districts. Our constituents, including those experiencing homelessness, want it dealt with. So let's deal with this in a comprehensive, compassionate way. It doesn't have to be what we announced last summer, um, at the sanitation yard when we introduced Care and Care Plus. It's a new world, it's different thinking, and I see alignment from all sides. Folks who called and gave impassioned comments, and then, you know, the other side as well. We wanna, we wanna do this with the utmost care, compassion, and humane approach. We wanna get people well, we wanna keep our neighborhoods, our sidewalks and our public rights of a way clean, but we do not, uh, nor should we try to purposely displace someone, uh, i- in this era that we're living in, uh, when we could offer them services and get them on a pathway to home, housing and wellness. So, um, Mr. Buscaino, I, I guess to, just my final comment is, if we could, I don't know if we can do this right now, but if we could, uh, take a moment, whether it's, it's, hear this again at the first council meeting next week, but, uh, make some definitions on what Care and Care Plus means as it relates to the zones where our bridge home shelters are, um, based on the elements of this discussion and the concerns that we've all aired, uh, in this, in this discussion.
Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, colleagues, we need to lead with a sense of urgency on this. Um, I don't support Mr. Blumenfeld, although I respect his amendment, I don't support it. We cannot wait for phase three to come, in a time where we're seeing more COVID-19 cases and more deaths taking place. Colleagues, yesterday's news broke in Studio City. Three apparent drug overdose victims were taken into hospital in grave condition after being found underneath a freeway underpass in Studio City. I read this, City News Service. Fire crews were dispatched at 1:30 PM beneath the 170 freeway underpass nearly near Moore Park Street, according to the fire department. Rescue queues, crews performed CPR on three adults who appeared to have overdosed on an unknown drug. They were taking, they were not breathing and had no pulse when paramedics took them to a hospital, according to the fire department. Firefighters searched the area, including tents at a nearby encampment for more victims. Bottom line is, our sanitation are not given the necessary tools to pick up bulky items in and around these encampments, colleagues. More homeless people are dying in our streets. We are doing a disservice if we don't pick up these bulky items in and around these encampments. We're doing a disservice to the homeless individual, we're doing a disservice to our businesses, and we're doing a disservice to our residents. All I'm asking is to simply clean up our streets. Why is that not acceptable? I just want to clean our streets. It, that's all I'm asking. So I encourage just an up and down vote to move on this. These are not sweeps. It's irresponsible to say these are sweeps. Just talk to the sanitation workers who are out there. I've been out there myself. When they sort buckets of feces and urine with the soiled mattresses, especially in and around the bridge home sites. This is what we promised our residents, colleagues. If you say yes to a solution, we will clean our streets and sidewalks. We're not enforcing anybody right now. In fact, the city attorney has only moved on eight citations of 5611 over the last several, eight? A little more than eight, but that's it. That's all I'm asking, colleagues. I ask for an aye vote.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, you know, again, I, I just wanna reiterate with the line of questions that I had engaged with sanitation that clearly indicated that they're not conducting comprehensive disinfecting efforts that were originally designed and associated with the Care Plus model as it was originally presented, that has not been occurring. Uh, I, I know it occurred in the circumstance, uh, at Paxton and Bradley, but again, that was associated with a complete removal of an encampment where a hundred percent of those in that, uh, living in that encampment were placed in a, a Project Room Key site. That said, uh, to underscore, these are not sweeps, that's not happening. That, and, and to allow anyone to misrepresent what is actually occurring as part of an effort to keep these areas clean and disinfected for unhoused populations, which is just as important as those of us are practicing the effort to, uh, sanitize, wear masks, wear gloves when we're out and about, have san, hand sanitizers, all of those things. Um, and frankly, uh, the idea that everyone else is allowed to roam free in their city, uh, you know, using precautions, why can't we, uh, treat everyone equal in this process to make sure that we're keeping everybody safe and, uh, in, in, out of harms way with respect to COVID-19? I think the disinfecting practices are important right now. Um, clearly, we're not intent on disturbing, uh, these encampments, but we have a responsibility, I think, for, for public health and safety to, to, uh, to really keep these areas as clean as we possibly can. And so, um, so I, you know, if, if, I, I think it's important for us to have this conversation, I think specifically, uh, in and around these bridge home locations, uh, bridge home sites, which we've unveiled twenty-four. Uh, you know, that's, I, it's, it's important, I think, for us to, uh, to maintain, uh, the integrity of, of what the commitment was, but to also maintain the, the cleanliness of these areas. Um, and, uh, so, uh, I, I just, I, you know, I, I wanna be clear because I think it's really easy to allow others, uh, to label the work that we're doing and, and, uh, and calling it, uh, calling it what it's not. And, and what I saw, even with respect to an encampment that was noticed for some time, that had not just months, but over a year of outreach efforts when we were engaged with the members of that encampment consistently, in order to help facilitate them even going and being prepared to go into Project Room Key. Uh, the amount of notice that went involved, the amount of care and diligence that the Bureau of Sanitation, I mean, let's not, let's not forget, it wasn't that long ago that Bureau of Sanitation was terrified to even pick up some of the bulky items that were in fact, uh, encroaching public right-of-way uh, out of fear of, uh, being personally charged. So there, uh, there's not an effort to go beyond what, uh, the scope, I think, among our sanitation workers. Um, so, uh, uh, I actually, I, you know, I stand in support of, of Mr. Buscaino's motion, and I think, uh, it's the responsible thing to do.
Mr. Coretts?
Yes, I just wanted to point out, uh, something that, that no one's addressed, and I don't know whether you're hearing about it elsewhere. And I only heard about this because I have a large encampment about three-quarters of a block away from my home, so I hear it from neighbors. But apparently, there was a sanitation truck out a week or so ago, maybe two weeks ago, um, to try and do a, a care cleanup, and they were chased away by the homeless and weren't able to a- attempt that, that cleanup. So we may think that eliminating the LAPD from the process is perfect, but we may need to come up with some sort of a hybrid where if we're not able to, uh, uh, at all clean up an encampment because, uh, uh, the homeless are, are pushing back too hard and too violently, um, we may need some LAPD, uh, backup, uh, in some of these instances. Unless we're willing to just concede we won't clean up the ones where the homeless, uh, fight back and don't allow it. So we may want to address that as, as part of this process as well.
Mr. Rue?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I think there's a, some confusion here. Um, you know, because we heard from sanitation, and I wanna ask him this question as well. Because, uh, trash cleanup and sanitizing is happening in the city. As a matter of fact, I even worked with Caltrans to pick up all the trash on our freeway entrances and exits. Um, obviously, it's maybe to a, to a degree that we all want, maybe it's not to that degree. Uh, I'm sure we could use a lot more, um, picking up trash and cleanups, and we could use a lot more porta potties and everything else. But, um, but, but this was an issue even before the pandemic occurred. So I just wanna ask the Department of Sanitation, if this motion passes today, what would be the difference between what you're doing now and what you would be able to do tomorrow if this passes?
Hello, sir. Howard Wong, Chief Environmental Compliance Inspector. If we would have changed the motion today, uh, to revert back to prior to March 2020, we will be conducting posted cleanups. Uh, even though we're under a restriction, our teams, our Care Plus and our Care Teams are still going out every day to each one of your districts to ensure that trash- still going out every day to each one of your districts to ensure that trash debris is picked up, health hazards are picked up regarding the biohazardous waste, any environmental issues, leaking RVs, things of that nature, is addressed by the Bureau of Sanitation. Regarding sanitizing of areas, when our teams are out there, we make an assessment of that. We will conduct sanitizing with our Care Plus and our Care Teams every day now. Our customer service groups worked with the council district reps and identified priority locations, and we dispatch our teams based on those priority locations.
Thank you. So basically, what you're saying is, you're doing all the cleanups right now, but the only thing you're not, you'll be able to do is a posted cleanup, which means you could actually remove the tent and the unhoused neighbor and basically move him or her out to another area, right?
That's correct.
I think that's, that is the only, and there's a lot of background noise. So that is the only difference. And it is clear again, Public Health Department and the CDC has said, please do not do that. I would really like, I don't know if Public Health Department is here from the county, probably not, I would really like for them to comment themselves, but since they are not here, I know that is what they told our office, that's what they told the city council and the city. So, and I want to just comment on one more thing that I think one of my colleagues said. You know, bulky items, removing bulky items, removing tents or displacing individuals is not what's going to prevent a drug overdose or a death. What causes a drug overdose and a death is the issue of homelessness, and nothing solves homelessness like a home. What we need to do is have more mental health workers, more outreach workers. We need to go back to our Care Plus, what Care Plus was supposed to be, to provide service immersion and diversion. It's not about sweeps and criminalization, but it's about diversion so we can get them those services so they can get out of homelessness. Just doing a cleanup just to push them out to another neighborhood is not going to solve this public health crisis, and actually, the Public Health Department is advocating against it, and this is not going to help them from overdosing on drugs. So I understand the frustrations, I am equally as frustrated. We've had this problem, we need to divert more resources into homelessness so we could tackle this problem holistically. But doing, going back to the old version of Care Plus where there's posted cleanups and we literally force encampments to move from my neighborhood to another neighborhood, to another council district is not going to solve this problem, but just solve a ping-pong effect, create a ping-pong effect. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree, Mr. Rue, that certainly cleanups are not going to solve homelessness. I don't think anybody here thinks that they are. This is not the way to solve homelessness or a health crisis. But having some form of cleanup will make it easier to, for communities to accept Bridge Homes. It will create, help remove some of the health hazards and trash hazards and blight hazards. The only question is, from, in my mind at this point, is, you know, we've already said we want to do Care Plus cleanups around Bridge Homes. We are not doing them because of COVID. And the question is, is that too broad? What is, what does, you know, what does the COVID, you know, why are we stopping because of COVID? We're stopping because of COVID because, especially at the beginning of this crisis, we told everybody to stay at home except for essential workers. That was what the governor defined as stage one. And I think it makes sense that we don't do these kind of cleanups during stage one. Now we're in stage two, according to the governor and the county. And, you know, at stage two, I think it's a little bit of a wobbler. We're allowing retail manufacturing offices, but telecommuting, but we're not allowing indoor dining. So there's still a lot of restrictions on whether people can, you know, how people move about and whether it's, you know, what is the danger of that movement? And so I think it's a wobbler in a sense of, is now the appropriate time while we're in stage two to resume the Care Plus cleanups? I think certainly when we get to stage three and people are dining in restaurants and there's, and there's a lot more permissible activities of healthcare, personal grooming, all of that stuff, it's hard to argue that it's not, it's too dangerous for somebody to move down the block for a couple of hours, not to be pushed from one community to another. I don't think the intention of this is to move it from one neighborhood to another, but to ask people to leave temporarily so things can be cleaned. I'm glad Caltrans is cleaning up trash in your district, they are not cleaning it up in mine. We, they basically told us directly, we are not touching it. The county has told us directly, we are not sending our people out, we are not touching it. So if other folks are getting that kind of service and their trash is getting picked up, good, you know, that's good for your constituents. It's not happening where I am. So anyway, so that's, people were asked, I wanted to speak again because people were asking me, a couple of people asked me to clarify what this amendment really does. And I want to be clear, what it does is, it does authorize the Care Plus cleanups, but only once we get to that next phase, and that's determined by the governor or the county, it's a health determination, only will it allow us to do that, once we get to that phase where we're starting to put these higher-risk workplaces in place. Because I think there, it's clear that there's not that extra risk. Because if we're just going to say we're not going to do care cleanup until this emergency is over, that's a long time from now. Because the reality is, this, you know, even once people start going back to restaurants and back to work, we're not going to declare this emergency over until we absolutely have to, because it's linked to our financial ability to get some of this money back. So you could be talking another year or more. So if you're saying we're going to wait until then, then you're basically saying you don't want to have Care Plus cleanups at any time, which is a legitimate conversation to have. And I think we're going to have to have that conversation, we're going to have to have it around Bridge Homes, we're going to have to have it around shelter pallets, we're going to have to have it around anywhere in our city, what do we want those cleanups to look like? And I think Mr. O'Farrell touched on that, that that's a legitimate thing, and we should talk about that and make sure that it's as humane as possible, but it achieves our cleanliness goals. So with that, that's why I put that amendment, because I think we're in a wobbler stage being in stage two. I think it's much more clear-cut when we get to stage three. I wouldn't support Care Plus when we're in stage one. So that's kind of where I'm at. But for me, it is linked to, it is directly linked to the health risks that we are facing. Thank you.
Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question to start with the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, the motion before us asks that we rescind an action that we took in March, but it's not an action that we took in March. So is this matter even in order?
So first off, I'm not sure whether we've taken the action or not. I don't really, I don't know well enough to answer you.
The council did not.
I do know this, that if we didn't.
Formative vote to stop Care Plus. The vote to say, don't take down tents.
So I do know that if we didn't take the action and we rescind it, we're essentially doing nothing. So I don't see really an issue there, and I take it it's a point of debate what actually occurred.
Well, I think it's a matter of written record that is very easy for anybody to see, but okay, I'll leave it at that. So colleagues, I'm still unclear on what the hell it is that we're asking to be done. I've asked, and the answer was, we want to clean up the streets. Well, that's great, we all want to clean up the streets. What does that mean? The history for years of the city's handling of homeless encampments and cleanups is, pardon the pun, has been littered with controversy and litigation. And we have been guided by consistent direction that we need to have clear protocols. For this body to just say, we want the streets to be cleaned up, go ahead and do it, that does not give proper guidance to our frontline workers. It certainly gives no guidance to those who are living on the street, and it gives no guidance to those who are living in neighborhoods where there are lots of encampments. It creates all sorts of confusion and, dare I say, false expectations. And adding more detail or more volume to what we define the problem to be does not put any more details on what the proposed solution is. So if this is about doing more bulky item pickup, then let's see a proposal that talks about how we can be legally compliant and do more bulky item pickup. If this is about doing something, as earlier comments said, about preventing drug overdoses, then, you know, maybe we need to be doing more, as Mr. Rue said, and providing healthcare services and social services and getting people off the street and providing them services that help them from dying, help them from getting addicted. If this is about preventing people from dying, because we heard the example earlier of some people, then, dear Lord, why are we focusing just near Bridge Housing? And then, if we're doing something that whose intent is to save people from dying, we should be trying to do it everywhere. What I would suggest, colleagues, because saying we want to restore Care Plus, we can say, on one hand, and in the course of this conversation, people have said, we want to do Care Plus, oh, but we don't want to violate the CDC guidelines. On the other hand, when asked by a member of this council, the department said what they interpret this to mean is we're going back to the way we were doing things prior to our March action, which is taking down the tents, which against CDC guidelines, against Department of Public Health guidelines, and is us substituting professional public health advice with political considerations. It's not how we should be acting during a pandemic. So I would welcome seeing a motion that talked about a better protocol for keeping our sidewalks clean and sanitizing areas where we have failed to get people off the street and have left them in encampments in unhealthy situations. And I would love to see that have comment on it by the city attorneys who are dealing with the bulky item lawsuits, by people who are themselves unhoused, by the people who are out doing the work on the front lines, and by our county public health officials. We can do a hell of a lot better in what this motion is seeking to do, but I think we need to be specific about it, and we need to be smart about it, and we need to make sure that everybody impacted weighs in so that we don't wind up hurting people, making people sick, or winding up in yet another, in the city's endless litany of lawsuits. So I would urge a no vote.
Okay, and seeing no other members on the queue, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. We're going to first vote on Mr. Blumenfield's amendment. So why don't we go ahead and call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. And again, this is on the amended.
Hold on for just a second, Madam Clerk. Mr. O'Farrell, did you want to add anything else?
I did, Madam President. I thought I had my hand up and then it vanished, but thank you for calling upon me. So, I think that we can land this plane, as Mr. Blumenfield mentioned, and I think we can do so with some amendments, and I'd like to condition my vote on the following, that when we, when we renew the Care Plus cleanups, resume them rather, as it relates to the Bridge Home sites and the zones that are specified therein, that there be a verification process. First of all, we should agree right now that CDC guidelines must be followed. That should be something we agree to right now. But furthermore, I would base my vote contingent upon a verification system that includes the following. And there's not enough time in the moment to verify if some of this is duplicative or not, but I think that these conditions land, sort of cover and synthesize some of this discussion. Number one, have a verification process at every day of service action that verifies adequate service outreach. Also, a verification that CD guidelines were complied upon, meaning if someone invokes that they are self-isolating because of COVID, that they be left alone, that the day of action accommodate that need, because that's certainly not everyone who's experiencing homelessness. That's the reality. Furthermore, that the environmental compliance inspector verify and determine that the guidelines on all of these days of service were followed with a signature. Furthermore, that LASSA also verify that outreach, CDC guidelines, and service outreach was conducted in relation to the encampments, and that compliance was voluntarily gained by experiencing homelessness. If we continue just looking the other way, nothing's going to get solved. So we need verification and a guarantee from sanitation that these guidelines will be followed. Furthermore, LASSA can also verify that any time, and this is where a big piece of confusion comes through, that sanitation determines that a site has contamination, that LASSA can verify that that issue was dealt with on the day of in an adequate and acceptable manner. So in other words, these amendments would be a report back from sanitation to cure all of these requirements and report back on how that would dovetail with the current requirements. In other words, we need to update, I think, the protocols for Care and Care Plus so we can address everything that we've been talking about. No displacement of people experiencing homelessness, that there's lots of voluntary compliance every time there's a Care Plus day of service, that CDC guidelines are followed, that the environmental compliance inspector will now include these additional protocols, and that LASSA also report, and that they are participating in all of these actions and in concert with sanitation as it relates to findings of contamination. Because that's always been a real issue as well, and I think that sanitation has felt that their hands have been tied because of different interpretations of what they can and cannot do if they come across an issue of contamination. And I know watershed management probably will have a say in that, but in other words, Mr. Buscano, I'll support this if we can make these guarantees based on the values of the discussion we had and the values of concerns expressed by constituents as it relates to our approach at these days of service cleanups where people are experiencing homelessness. Madam President, I'd like to call for the question.
Okay, did you want to accept any of the recommendations from Mr. O'Farrell before I call, before I move on to the vote?
Again, I would encourage an up or down vote here.
Very well, sir.
To, yeah, that's what I.
Mr. Buscano has just called for the question, let's go ahead and vote on Mr. Rue.
And perhaps Mr. O'Farrell can put that on a standalone motion.
It's a report back, Joe. So we would vote yes, but they would report back on all this as they begin renewing and resuming the Care and Care Plus. So it's a report back, it's not, and that will get my vote. We just need to report back on these guarantees.
That's fine, I do, we have 46 pages of protocols, and we can go through those protocols. If that gets you an aye vote so we can get back to cleaning and disinfecting our sidewalks, I'd appreciate that, I would support that. And to Mr. Blumenfield's amendment, if we are allowing outdoor dining in Phase Two, why can't we allow comprehensive cleanups in and around these encampments? So again, I.
Mr. Buscano, you've called for the question. So let's go ahead and vote on Mr. Blumenfield's amendment, go ahead and call the roll.
Yes, and for clarification on the members, this is item 46, the Blumenfield Amendment. Councilmember Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, no.
Buscano.
No.
Sadio.
Sadio, no.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Coretts.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
No.
Lee.
No.
Martinez.
No.
O'Farrell.
No.
Price.
No.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rue.
No.
Wesson.
Wesson, no.
Five ayes and nine noes, this amendment fails.
Can we just move on to the item? Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Yes, this is item 46, as amended with the O'Farrell-Buscaino motion on the report back, and it'll be one vote. Councilmember Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, no.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Dawson, no.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
No.
Wesson.
Wesson, no.
Ten ayes and four noes, this item is adopted as amended.
Okay, members, we're going to go back to items two and three.
Madam President, let me just read out the call information very quickly, even though we've done it before. If you want to speak on items two or three, please call 669-254-5252, and use meeting ID number 1605358466, then press the pound button, and press pound again when prompted for the participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Again, call 669-254-5252, and use meeting ID number 1605358466, then press pound, press pound again when prompted for the participant ID, and once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. And we'll give it just a very short time in case people are dialing in right now. And if we have a speaker?
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I'd like to speak regarding items two and three.
Okay, you have two minutes, please go ahead.
So, I think that the vote that you guys just took is a good example of why bids are a really bad, undemocratic form of so-called business improvements, because, as has been previously mentioned, the Business Improvement District incentivizes business owners and stakeholders to criminalize and to demonize the unhoused. Unhoused people are part of our community, just because they can't pay a special levy or have special interests on their side doesn't mean that they don't deserve the same rights that we try to give people with bids. So, I urge all of you to please vote against Business Improvement Districts, although I don't have any faith in that, because all of you heartless motherfuckers just resumed this fucking resume sweep! What the fuck is wrong with you? You guys spent how many fucking hours-
Okay, you're off topic, Speaker. Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Shame. Shame.
Which items do you want to speak on, Speaker?
Shame.
Okay, so the Speaker's off topic, I suggest we move on to the next person.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Speaker, we can't hear you, what items do you want to speak on? Okay, I suggest we move on to the next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Stevie, I'm a member of the Los Angeles Tenants Union, calling to speak on items two and three.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, it's unconscionable that we're even considering these bids right now in the middle of a pandemic, although it's no surprise, given City Council's inaction on anything that would actually protect the people of Los Angeles. So, I don't really have a lot to say, because I already waited on, for two and a half hours on hold to give comment on all the other items that you didn't let us speak on. We need to cancel rents, I can't believe you just authorized sweeps, City Council is a disaster, and we have an apocalypse on the horizon.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Shannon Hartman, I'm calling about items two and three, particularly the BIDs in Granada Hills.
Please go ahead.
So, I grew up in Granada Hills, my dad grew up in Granada Hills his entire life, back when he, they were on a chicken farm and everything, so... I really encourage the council to look at a report written in 2018 by the UC Berkeley and their Policy Advocacy Center, the effect of BIDs on California-
Speaker, you're breaking up a bit.
Okay, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I strongly encourage the council, before considering any more BIDs, to read a research paper published by UC Berkeley.
Okay.
Called-
Okay, I, we're, the Speaker's breaking up to the point where we really can't understand her, I think we're going to have to move on to the next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Mimi, I'd like to talk on items two and three, please.
Please go ahead.
Um, the bids, um, I'm against the bids, we need to abolish them, you guys do not talk to unhoused people, this wouldn't help them, and it's just blatantly racist and anti-black. We know that black people in Los Angeles especially are more likely to be homeless.
So, Speaker, I'm not quite sure if you're speaking on either of the two bid items, could you please connect it up clearly?
Which items? Are these, is this not two and three?
It's two and three, it's about the Encino Commons property bid and the Old Granada Village CD-12 property bid. If you're speaking on those, I didn't really understand how that was the case, so please tie things up so it's clear.
No, you'll be-
Okay, thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
David Zeta, I'd like to speak on behalf of Granada Hills item.
Go ahead, please, you have a minute for the Granada Hills item.
Yes. There are five businesses in this property, every one of them is closed, they have shut down all the businesses, the parking lot's completely empty, in the front, there's homeless people living here, and, you know, we cannot possibly afford another tax on top of the tax that we're paying already, so I'm wadding against it if it's possible.
Okay, thank you, Speaker.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Speaker, are you there? Apparently, there's no one on this line, let's move to the next one.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I was the speaker earlier who was breaking up, I hope you can hear me now.
Sure, so we'll give you a minute, I think you got in a fair amount, so continue your-
Okay, well, to give you the full citation, the article from the UC Berkeley Research Center and their Policy Advocacy Center that you need to read about BIDs is "Homeless Exclusion Districts: How California Business Improvement Districts Use Policy Advocacy and policing Practices to Exclude Homeless People from Public Space." This was published recently in 2018, and the first author is Jeffrey Silbin, and I suggest you read into the harms that BIDs do. Thank you very much, goodbye.
Thank you very much, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Sarah Eastwood from Streetwatch, I'd like to speak on items two and three.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the sentiments of the other callers and opposition to the Business Improvement Districts and what's being proposed. Bids need to be completely abolished, they enact violence on housed people, and I don't think this council realizes that simply moving people and forcing them outside of the Business Improvement Districts and taking their belongings and all of, everything they own, isn't actually solving the housing crisis. I heard the council members speak on Project Room Key, but I don't think anyone's actually ever talked to anyone facing housing problems or issues getting housing. It is impossible to get a room with Project Room Key, you are not doing an adequate job of providing-
So, we're moving off of the bid items, could you kind of stick to the big bid items, please?
Yeah, I mean, the Business Improvement Districts, like the previous caller mentioned, are racist and classist and do nothing to actually improve safety or sanitation. We should provide, be providing, you know, trash cans and sanitation stations and maintaining them, and, you know, the bids do not deserve our taxpayer money.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I'd like to speak on the items two and three, my name's-
Please go ahead.
So, I think that, I think that Business Improvement Districts are really bad for small businesses, because small businesses that can't afford to pay the levies describing Business Improvement Districts are priced out of those districts. This really reduces the character of our city, I mean, a lot of the areas that are currently Business Improvement Districts are areas that capitalize on the culture that those districts had before the Business Improvement District came into effect. That culture is tied to the fact that businesses need to be able to afford to operate, small businesses need to be able to afford to operate in this city, and Business Improvement Districts take away that opportunity away from them, not to mention that they do nothing for street vendors, uh, street vendors should be included as stakeholders just as much as any brick mortar business, because like I said, they are part of the character of the city. I'm sure the city itself promotes taco trucks as part of the culture and character of the city, but those same businesses are then pushed out and demonized by these bids. So, I think bids are very as bad for small businesses, I think they're bad for street vendors, and I think that their resulting effects are very racist, very anti-tourist, and they cause a lot of displacement, they cause these neighborhoods to price out all the people that help serve the richer people, like any, so, there's been cooks calling, there's all sorts of people that call in and say, "Hey, Business Improvement Districts priced me out of living here," and I agree with that. So, I just think that, you know, the dumb motherfuckers on the City Council who vote to resume sweeps, and dumb motherfuckers like Stefan Fravo, who's motherfucking raising Ron, it's not better!
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
This is Eric, two and three.
Go ahead.
Um, I just want to say that I am vehemently opposed to bids. I used to work in South Park at a restaurant, and I would regularly see these private security forces harassing and terrorizing mostly black and brown unhoused people. I just want to say, City Attorney, when you interrupt people who are clearly on subject, when they say the words "anti-black," and you tell them how is this on subject, that is unconstitutional, and it is wrong, and it is racist, and we are all listening to you, and we all see you, this is, when Eric, Mayor Eric R. Saidi said this is the most aggressive City Council in America, that is a bold-faced lie, okay?
Okay, could we stick to the bid items, please? Please stick strictly to the bid items.
So, these bids, uh, Jesus, so these bids are, yeah, they are anti-black, okay? Here, the bids are being used as primers for the 2028 Olympics, that's why they are being put in place right now, because we have, if you want to look it up, South Park Bid Director Ellen Rioto, she's discussing the increase in budget for security, which are clean and safe teams. They want more money for banishing unhoused people, which is what safe sweep teams need. This is all tied in to, to cleaning, which is a genocidal term, people, cleaning the streets, think about what that means when you all say that. You're not cleaning garbage, you're cleaning people, it's genocidal language. I yield my time, fuck all of you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's DQ, I'm with Streetwatch LA, and anyone who has a conscience, I'm calling in about items two and three.
Please go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to plug the website, MichaelColehouse.org, there's a lot of info about bids up there, all you need to know, everyone on the call who hasn't been there, get radicalized, these bids do all of the things that the previous callers say, and a little bit more, have been empowered to arrest people, assistance arrests in Hollywood, they're backwards. So, here's a comment from an unhoused comrade, that I'm going to read, Ashley from downtown. "The only reason you use police or bids is to put fear into us, it's a scare tactic. All you, you want the police and bids to follow their rules, and the first thing they do is start chucking people's personal items. I've seen people take and throw away ladies."
Speaker, we can't understand this, it's not time for an audiovisual display, please just speak to us, yourself.
I'm speaking to you.
Speaker, we can't understand what that recording is saying, it, maybe you could summarize it.
I'm speaking, please be quiet. So, they started chucking bikes, they put porta-potties up, they don't service them, they drop off porta-potties, they tried to get information to get these things serviced, they have to find people who are contracting it, you put the onus on people who are living on the streets, and good job, good job reinforcing the sweeps, all of you guys had a fucking-
So, I think you're off topic, Speaker.
It's all on topic, look up intersectionality.
Okay, so, I, not everything is on topic, I suggest we move to the next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is I Yiel, and I'd like to speak on two and three, please.
Please go ahead.
Hello, Faubel, I just want to say, everything that I'm about to say is on topic, you do need to research intersectionality, you do need to understand what you're doing when you completely cut off the people who are calling in-
Okay, you're off topic, please get on topic, Speaker.
Sir, I'm on, okay, I'm on topic, topic two and three, Faubel, you're a piece of shit, topic two and three, I'm opposed to the bids, topic two and three, speaking of cleaning, you guys should flush the council chamber and see what shit sticks, okay?
Okay, you're off topic, let's move on to the next speaker, please.
Please state your name-
Hello, mommy!
So, Mr. Herman, you called in before and gave comment, and you were off topic, and we cut you off, so we're cutting you off again now.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
And sorry, I had meant to say Mr. Spindler, go ahead. We, the person's hung up anyway, we've exhausted our speakers.
Yeah, that concludes our speakers for this item. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on items two and three.
Yes, and Madam-
Please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam President, and if I may, regarding items two and three, the public hearing is now closed for items two and three, and the tabulation of ballots shall take place in City Hall, room 223, immediately, and the ballot tabulation results will be announced on Tuesday, August 4th. And I'll continue with the roll call. Councilmember Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez. Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Thirteen ayes, these items are adopted. What's before us, Madam Clerk, now?
Madam President, verbal motions have been introduced by members.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and start with those? How many do you have?
We have ten.
Okay. Go ahead.
The first verbal motion to be referred to the Housing Committee has been presented by Councilmember Sidiyo. This is to instruct the Housing and Community Investment Department to report on the feasibility of using unused Airbnb units for affordable housing. And a seconder?
Second.
Mr. Buscayino?
Thank you. The next verbal motion has been presented by Councilmember Sidiyo to be referred to the Ad-Hoc COVID Committee, and this is to request the Department of Recreation and Parks to create a pilot program in CD1 to designate social distancing areas in city parks so that parks may safely reopen while following social distancing guidelines.
Second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez.
Oh, shoot, that was the one I was supposed to second.
Thank you.
Mr. Buscayino, did you have anything to add?
Oh, sorry.
Yep, try to hit mute, just mute yourself, thank you. Next.
The next verbal motion has been presented by Councilmember Sidiyo to be referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee. This instructs the Planning Department to prepare an ordinance that requires every development agreement for the construction of any project in the city to include a provision that requires applicants to enter an agreement to incorporate a local hire requirement.
Is there a second? Second.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Rodriguez, next.
Thank you. The next verbal motion has been presented by Councilmember Rodriguez to be referred to the Budget and Finance Committee. This amends prior council action of May 26, 2020, to repurpose Cultural Affairs funding from the Hanson Dam fireworks to CD7 COVID-19 programming, to reappropriate $75,000 from the Arts and Cultural Facilities Trust Fund to a new account in the Cultural Affairs Fund entitled CD7 COVID-19 Programming.
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Sidiyo, next.
The next motion was introduced by Councilmember Monica Rodriguez to be placed on the next regular council agenda. It is a motion offering a reward of $50,000 leading to, for information leading to the identification and conviction of persons responsible for the shooting death of Michael Calley on February 15, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blumenfield? Next. The next motion was introduced by Councilmember Monica Rodriguez to be placed on the next regular council agenda. It is offering a reward of $50,000 for information leading to the identification and conviction of the persons responsible for the shooting death of Omar Medina on February 21, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sidiyo?
Second.
Thank you. The next motion was co-presented by Councilmembers Harris Dawson, Krikorian, and Corretts to be placed on the next regular council agenda. It is to direct all city departments with assistance from the Personnel Department and the city administrative officer to report to the council with requests for new targeted local hire eligible position authorities that were not included in the adopted budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Is there a second?
Wesson, second.
Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, the next verbal.
Next.
The next verbal motion is introduced by Councilmember Bob Blumenfield to be referred to the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. It is to include support in the city's 1920 state legislative program for AB 1550, Bonta, which would create a private right of action against a person who makes a 911 call aimed at violating the rights of other persons based upon race, religion, sex, or any other protected class. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wesson wanted to be a co-presenter on that, so we could add him on that.
Okay, so we'll add Mr. Wesson as a co-presenter. Who was the second? Was that you, Mr. Buscayino?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I, Mr. Wesson and Mr. Price are on my list, apologies.
Yes.
Wanted to be co, sorry, Mr. Price.
Thank you.
Hold on, okay, hold on, Mr. Blumenfield.
I welcome them both as co-presenters.
So, Mr. Blumenfield, your co-presenters are Mr. Wesson and Mr. Price?
Correct.
And your second is Mr. Buscayino?
And Mr. Dawson was the second on the written version.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Buscayino, it's Mr. Harris Dawson.
They can both second.
All good, sharing is caring.
All right, next, next.
Thank you, the final verbal was introduced by Councilmember Bob Blumenfield to be referred to the Ad-Hoc COVID Committee. It is to request that the city attorney and direct the LAPD and Public Works Bureau of Street Services to report to the council with an update on their enforcement of the mayor's Safer L.A. order specifically with respect to mandatory face coverings in public. Is there a second?
Sidiyo, second.
Mr. Sidiyo, second. Who was the maker of that verbal motion, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bob Blumenfield.
Thank you. Okay, next.
And a verbal resolution has been introduced by Councilmember Blumenfield to prohibit the parking of vehicles in excess of 22 feet in length and seven feet in height during the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM along Burbank Boulevard between Woodlake Avenue and Sedan Avenue, and this is to be referred to Transportation Committee. And a seconder?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sidiyo?
Those are all the verbal motions we're aware of.
Members, any other verbal motions that have not been submitted writtenly? Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. The first one with Mr. Blumenfield as a second, the moving clause is, I therefore move that the city attorney be requested to prepare and present an ordinance with an urgency clause that would require payment of a fine of $100 for the first violation, $250 for the second violation, and $500 for the third and subsequent violations, the failure to comply with the mayor's Safer L.A. emergency order to wear a mask outside the home, to be enforced by any city of Los Angeles agencies with authority to do so in order to mitigate the spread of COVID-19.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any others?
Yes, I have another one with presumed second from CD8. I therefore move that the Department of Civil and Human Rights, in consultation with any other appropriate city departments as needed, determine the feasibility of establishing a civil and human rights impact assessment program for application to departmental, city council, and mayoral actions and decision-making, and report back to the city council within 60 days with recommendations on program scope, issue areas that could be addressed, staffing needs, and how such a program would fit into the city's procedures.
Any others, Mr. Corretts?
Yes, I have a third one to be co-presented by Mr. Bonnen and seconded by Mr. Rue. Now therefore, be it resolved with the concurrence of the mayor, that by the adoption of this resolution, the city of Los Angeles includes in its 2019-2020 state legislative program support for AB 345, Maru Suci, which would protect children, families, and communities across Los Angeles and across California from the health and safety hazards associated with oil and gas extraction. And a last resolution.
So this is your fourth, is this the fourth one?
Yes.
Okay.
Fourth and last, to be seconded by Mr. Blumenfield. Now for, now therefore be it resolved with the concurrence of the mayor, that by the adoption of this resolution, the city of Los Angeles hereby includes in its 2020-21 state legislative program support for SB 1175, STERN, to strengthen statewide protections against zoonotic diseases and animal cruelty.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Buscayino?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I move that the chief legislative analyst, with the assistance of the city attorney, prepare and execute all necessary documents and take all necessary actions to grant $10 million in coronavirus relief funds, known as CRF, to the L.A. Tourism and Convention Board, subject to the CRF eligibility as determined by the chief, city's administrative officer, for the purpose of general operating support to ensure continuity of operations in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Blumenfield, any others, Mr. Buscayino?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you. I had one written, but it didn't get picked up, so I'll read it. It says, the moving clause, there's two moving clauses. One, I therefore move that the council instruct the Department of Building and Safety, in consultation with the city attorney, to prepare and present an ordinance to suspend all citation enforcement provisions, and thereby waive the requirement for businesses to obtain a permit for temporary signs that are tack-pasted or otherwise temporarily affixed to windows and/or the walls of buildings, barns, sheds, or fences as defined by Municipal Code Section 14.4.16, and rescind the 14 order to comply citations for temporary sign violations issued from March 4, 2020 through July 24, 2020, and allow temporary signs until the end of the COVID-19 state of emergency with notifications to property owners as to the sunset date. I further move that the council instruct the Department of Building and Safety, in consultation with the city attorney, to prepare a report with recommendations on which codes present life-safety concerns and should continue to be enforced during the COVID-19 state of emergency, and this is also presented by Mr. Krikorian.
Second.
Second by Mr. Corretts. Any others, Mr. Blumenfield?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Price?
Madam President, I'm presenting this on behalf of Councilmember Paul Krikorian, who is having some technical difficulties, but I therefore move that the council instruct the city administrative officer to provide mid-quarter reports to the Budget and Finance Committee on the status of the city's finances, including updates on revenue, expenditures, the pace at which employees are subscribing to the separation incentive program, or the savings generated if it is implemented, and another pertinent details that substantially impact the city's finances at its meetings on August 24, October 26, and December 14.
Is there a second? Mr. Buscayino, seconded, that was introduced by Mr. Price for Mr. Krikorian. Any others, Mr. Price?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm also introducing something for Councilmember Krikorian. I further move that, I therefore move that the council instructs the chief CLA, in consultation with the Department of Recreation and Parks, and the city library, to report back to the council in 30 days with a plan to provide appropriate staffing, supervis, supervision, and supplemental programs at parks and libraries to provide Los Angeles students with alternative learning environments while distance learning is mandated. I further move that the council instruct the CAO to report on funding sources for the costs associated with this program, including the federal care's funding for COVID-19 responses, as well as an, as well as the unappropriated balance reserve for preservation of city services, reinvestment in disadvantaged communities and communities of color, reimagining public safety service delivery, and target a local hire program. I further move that the council instruct the Department of Recreation and Parks and Library Department to report on the availability of Wi-Fi at each potential distance learning site, and whether the Wi-Fi at each site would be capable of serving students in a distance learning capacity. And I was actually going to second this myself.
Mr. Rue, just to let you know, I introduced this motion before we went on recess, and Brecken Parks is currently working on a report that's going to be coming to the city council in the next couple of weeks on distance learning and how do we utilize our parks to do so.
Thank you, Madam President. This is from Councilmember Krikorian, so I was just reading it in for him.
Okay, is there a second to this motion?
I was actually going to second it myself.
Very well, thank you. Any others? Okay, seeing none? Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? No announcements, let's go ahead, we have several adjournments this afternoon. Let's start with Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, it's with an incredibly heavy heart that I make the following adjournment for my friend, Council District 12 Councilmember Hal Burnson. Councilmember Burnson was born on November 19, 1930, and grew up in Boyle Heights, and in 1958, he moved to San Fernando Valley and was elected by Council District 12 voters to the city council in 1979. Councilmember Burnson was then re-elected to the city council five times until he retired in 2003. All the accomplishments that he's responsible for are too long to go over here today, but I want to talk about what he's most well-known for, and that was his attention to earthquake safety legislation, which has honestly saved countless of, countless lives here in our city. Early in his career, he wrote the Los Angeles Unreinforced Masonry Ordinance, which required the structural reinforcement of 8,900 old brick buildings in Los Angeles. And by the time of the 94 Northridge earthquake, nearly 96% of those buildings had been reinforced, and not a single one of those buildings collapsed in the quake. He was also a respected leader in transportation. Councilmember Burnson chaired the city's council, council's transportation committee, the metro board, and the Southern California Regional Rail Authority. Councilmember Burnson was a master in planning and land use. Despite being politically unpopular at the time, Councilmember Burnson approved plans that led to today's vibrant community of Porter Ranch. The community includes the land he secured for prior Station 28, Porter Ranch Community School, and his beloved North Valley Family YMCA. That, over the years, he has raised millions of dollars to help disadvantaged youth go to summer camps. He's also known from authoring some of the city's equine keeping ordinances, creating land use protections for decades to come, and acquired numerous properties to preserve for parkland and open space for generations to enjoy. I just want to share a couple of personal stories about Councilmember Burnson. You know, as you know, he was, Councilman Burnson is always a fighter, and one of the first times I met with him, you know, I got a good sense of this when I was working on Councilman Smith's first campaign. All of a sudden, I saw Hal run to the front of the office and yelled at me to jump in the car with him, and we immediately drove off. And when I asked him where we were going, he told me that he received a call that someone was stealing our lawn signs. And I just looked at him and I said, okay, you know, so what, what's the plan? What are we going to do? And he looked at me and said, well, we're going to go kick some ass. And I tried to explain to him how the two of us didn't exactly meet the most intimidating duo, but he just looked at me disappointingly and just said, just back me up. And, you know, there are so many stories I can share with you about how, how he loved to tell me how to drive every time we carpooled together, how he once accused me of stealing from him, but told me that if I returned the item, that no questions would be asked. He obviously found that item, but it became a running joke between us. But most of all, I can tell you how much he cared about anyone that was part of the CD12 family. Councilman Burnson was our patriarch. He was the head of our family. I moved to Council District 12 in 1978, one year before he was elected. He was my councilman and will always be my councilman. He truly set the standard of constituent services that everyone who followed him has strived for. Everyone who has lived in this community and this city has benefited by his service. He will always be a fixture of Council District 12 and will be missed by me and our entire community. Councilmember Burnson is survived by his. Councilmember Burnson is survived by his wife, Robin, daughters Nicole and Sarah, and he was unfortunately preceded in his deaths by his daughter Holly. In lieu of flowers, the Burnson family asks for donations to be made to the North Valley YMCA. For more information on donating, contact the North Valley YMCA at 818-271-5053. May Councilman Hal Burnson rest in peace. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, that was beautiful. If I may ask, that we add all members to this adjourning motion?
Of course.
Thank you.
Madam President, if I may, I just want to add to Mr. Lee's really well-stated adjourning motion. You know, Hal was just a no-nonsense man. Also noted was his incredible sense of humor and ability to communicate in writing in ways that I think has become legendary in CD-12, if I'm not mistaken. Some famous letters that were drafted with his signature, but...
Letters we could not write today.
Letters that we could not write today, but it was, I think, most recently when we were honoring Nicole Burnson in her departure from council, that I think, you know, I got to see Hal during your race, John, but, you know, I was a 20-year-old intern when I started, when I had my first introduction to City Hall, and Hal was a member of the council, and I remember him so well, but it was in his visit to council chambers again, when Nicole was leaving Council District 12 and moving on to the Office of Finance, that, you know, his legacy continues in her example and her honorable service to our city, and I know how incredibly proud he was of her work, and, you know, Hal was just, he was genuine in his support of the North Valley YMCA, which I was also privileged to serve on the board of, and it's just, it's a tragic loss and a reminder of how quickly time has passed, but, you know, my thanks to you for that beautiful adjournment, and my love to Robin and Sarah, and of course, my dear friend Nicole on this tragic loss for our city. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I have two adjourning motions. The first is a great friend to Echo Park, a friend to me personally as well, and that is the passing of Michael O'Brien, who passed away on July 16, and I'd like to adjourn today's council meeting in Michael O'Brien's name. Michael discovered his passion for landscape architecture in the early 1980s and enrolled in the Landscape Architecture Program at UCLA Extension, where he received his professional designation certificate in landscape architecture in 1983. In '86, after working in several landscape architecture and architecture offices, he started his 28-year employment at the City of Los Angeles as a landscape architectural assistant with the Bureau of Engineering. The next year, he transferred to the Department of City Planning, where he was engaged in the development of cutting-edge policies, programs, and projects from landscape and urban design to environmental and zoning regulations. Michael was also very involved in community events and programs in the neighborhoods where he lived over the past 36 years, including Echo Park, Elysian Park, and Silver Lake. Michael was an active member of the Steering Committee for the Citizens Committee to Save Elysian Park, the Echo Park Improvement Association, and a collaborator with other Echo Park community organizations. He originated many publicly attended walking tours throughout the community with the Echo Park Historical Society as well, and that's, it's through those organizations that I met him back in 2003. Michael was committed to historic preservation of cultural landmarks, including buildings and landscapes, and was involved in the nomination for historic status for the Echo Park Lake with the city's Cultural Affairs Department, another project I worked with him on, the nomination for the World War I Memorial Grove that we have been restoring in Elysian Park over the past few years, and the cultural historic monument designation for the mid-century modern J.R. Davidson and R.M. Schindler-designed Sabse House in Silver Lake, where he lived for 15 years in the '80s and the '90s until he moved and spent the rest of his life living in Echo Park. Michael will be remembered for his dedication to community service, his commitment to sustainable landscapes and historic preservation, and even his expletive-laden lack of patience, which I have been witness to. His Irish would come out, so to speak, and it's something that I can very much relate to, along with his generous spirit and the huge heart he had for the Echo Park community, and his wicked wit. Michael O'Brien passed away Thursday, July 16, at his home after being diagnosed with kidney disease and lung cancer. He was a very youthful 74-years-old. Michael leaves an indelible impression on his friends, neighbors, and colleagues, and he will be greatly missed, and he will also very much live on in our minds and our hearts. I doubt I'll ever be able to go to Echo Park and not think of Michael O'Brien. The other adjourning motion I'd like to do is for Gabriela O'Donnell, who was a medical assistant at the City of Hope and mother of our friend, the remarkable young mayor of Long Beach, Robert Garcia. I'd like to adjourn today's meeting in honor of his mother, known as Gabby affectionately, Gabby O'Donnell. Gabriela immigrated to the United States with her five-year-old son, Robert, to escape the danger of a domestic terror group called The Shining Path in her native Lima, Peru. She and her son could not speak English when they settled 4,161 miles away in the San Gabriel Valley, where she cleaned houses to earn a living. Gabriela later moved to Whittier and became a medical assistant in a satellite office for the City of Hope in West Covina for 28 years. Garcia earned citizenship after President Ronald Reagan signed an amnesty bill in 1986. Yes, that actually happened, an amnesty bill signed by a Republican president. It fast-tracked his and his family's path to citizenship. It still took roughly 12 years to become a citizen, which the mayor achieved at the age of 21. Gabriela and her sons said one of the proudest days in their lives came when they became United States citizens. Mayor Robert Garcia said in a statement, "She immigrated from Peru to the United States in search of the American dream, and she found it. She loved to help people and lived a happy and joyous life. She will always be our guiding light and the center of our lives. My brother and I want to thank the incredible team at Long Beach Memorial for taking care of our mom during her last days. They are heroes, and we will forever be grateful." My stepfather, Greg O'Donnell, is still in the hospital and on a ventilator. We pray and hope for a full recovery, and Mayor Garcia, we will all join you in prayers for your stepfather, Greg. So with that, colleagues, Gabby O'Donnell passed away due to complications from COVID-19 and is survived by her husband, Greg. Prayers to Greg and her two sons, our dear friend, Robert Garcia. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell, if I can please ask that all members be added to the adjourning motion, and Mrs. O'Donnell?
Absolutely.
And our condolences to our dear friend, Mayor Garcia. Thank you, sir. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I too tragically have two adjourning motions, and, you know, at a time when so many of our first, when all of our first responders and so many city workers are on the front lines combating and servicing our community in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, we tragically lost two of our beloved first responders, one in our L.A. City Fire Department and one in our Los Angeles Police Department. First, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of firefighter/paramedic Jose M. Perez, and who passed away due to COVID-19 complications on Saturday, July 25. Jose began his career with the Fire Department on December 8, 2003, and was assigned to Fire Stations 39, 52, 65, and 33s, and for the last four years at Fire Station 21. Jose displayed constant generosity and compassion and positively impacted everyone he encountered, whether it was his fellow crew members or patients that he treated. Many stories have been shared since his passing that demonstrate Jose's innate kindness, and I'd like to share one with you all right now. Several years back, after learning that a fellow firefighter was experiencing some financial hardship and stress, Jose took it upon himself to purchase Disneyland passes for the firefighter and his family. Jose's generosity didn't end there. He then proceeded to accompany that family with him and his, along with his family, and purchased all the meals on that day, as well as souvenirs for the kids to take home. It's indicative of who he was. Jose was born at Martin Luther King Junior Hospital in South LA and grew up in Lakewood. He lived in Cerritos with his wife Heidi and three children, Adrian, Kaylee, and Jace, Jacy. He is also survived by his mother, Maria, who lives in Fontana. He is the first member of our L.A. City Fire family to lose the battle to the COVID-19 virus. Our, Jose honorably served this city and the Fire Department for 16 years, and it's with great sadness that we adjourn today in his honor. May he rest in peace. And, colleagues, I again ask that we adjourn today in memory of police officer two, Valentin Val Martinez. Officer Martinez courageously fought a two-month-long battle with COVID-19 and passed away just the day before Jose on Friday, July 24, 2020. Val was born on February 22, 1975, in San Luis Tabasco, Zacatecas, Mexico. He became an LAPD officer on April 30, 2007, and honorably served the people of Los Angeles for 13 years. Officer Martinez was assigned to Mission Area Division in 2008 and spent the remainder of his 12 years there because he loved the Mission Division and the community it served. He was a dedicated officer and friend who could always be counted on when others needed help. Val was a loving partner to Megan Flynn and soon-to-be father of twin boys that are due in November. He is also survived by his mother, Maria, father Ricardo Senior, sister Diana, and brothers Ricardo Junior, Navor, and Juan. It is with great sadness that we adjourn today in memory of Officer Val Martinez, the first sworn officer in our Los Angeles Police Department to succumb to COVID-19 complications. On behalf of our city family, our deepest condolences go out to his family and colleagues. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, and if I may ask, that we, all members be added to both our journey motions, and our condolences go out to both of their families. Thank you. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. Members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Francisco Javier Miramontes. Last Wednesday, we lost Francisco, who passed away suddenly, 77-years-old. He was a loving husband, father, grandfather, great-grandfather, brother, and friend to many, and a proud 50-year resident of Wilmington. Francisco was born in 1943 in Zacatecas, Mexico, where at a young age, he helped support his family by farming and raising livestock. In the 1960s, he was a migrant worker in the United States, where he worked in Amarillo, Texas, in Salinas, California. He married and created a beautiful family with his wife of 54-years, Maria. The young family migrated to America in 1971 and believed America would provide a great opportunity for his children, and it sure did. He was a proud member of the Carpenters Union, Local 721, for 30 years, and retired in 2009 after many years of hard work. In his spare time, he'd enjoyed gardening, cooking, and prayer. He was also a member of the San Pedro YMCA, and he loved to swim and work out six days a week. He was a parishioner at St. Paul's Peter and Paul Catholic Church for 28 years and served as an usher at the 9:30 a.m. mass for over 10 years. Francisco was a man of strong faith, courage, tenacity, and nothing was more important than spending time with his family. When asked about his greatest accomplishments, he responded, "My grandchildren and becoming a U.S. citizen." He is survived by his loving wife, Maria, his children, Lourdes, Francisco, Rogelio, and Maribel, his nine grandchildren, Natalie, Sofia, Francisco, Matthew, Christian, Alyssa, Joseph, and Emily, and Gianna, three great-grandchildren, and siblings, Antonia, Povita, Petra, Pablo, Raoul, Inancio, and Mario. He is preceded in death by his loving parents, Pedro and Angela Miramontes, brother Tomas Miramontes, and twin great-grandchildren, Francisco and Delia. Francisco, may he rest in peace. And secondly, members, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Stephen Renell, with great sympathy that we adjourn in his memory. He was the owner of Steve's Barber Shop in Watts, where many sought out mentorship, inspiration, and a quick touch-up. Stephen was a proud father of 12, a grandfather, a local business owner, and dedicated community member, and a barber who put God and his community first. Stephen truly exemplified the altruistic spirit when it came to the Watts community. He provided support and leadership to youth who struggled along with personal journeys. He became a staple for endless families when it came to their child's first fade and ever, every touch-up afterwards, and he made sure every family that came through his shop walked away looking and feeling good. Stephen made it his mission to continue reinvesting in the Watts community by supporting youth with careers in his shop, donating what he could to local businesses and nonprofits, providing free haircuts, day-to-day items to families in need. Stephen's loss has left the community mourning a leader, a brother, a father, a mentor, a man who provided a safe space and nurturing support for those who needed a community and sense of belonging. May he rest in peace. Thank you, Madam President, members.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Marjorie Platt. Marjorie was known to her family and friends as Margie, and her loving grandson Josh Flag reminded me that she was the matriarch of one of the largest, one of the oldest Jewish families in Los Angeles. She was born in Baltimore, Maryland, on December 24, 1921. Margie and her family moved to Los Angeles when she was six-years-old. She started her career at the historic May Company on Wilshire and Fairfax in Council District 4, where her skill in design and love for people quickly elevated her to a management position. It was over a broken jukebox at the May Company Building where Margie met Herman Platt, and the two began a 60-year partnership. Margie and Herman Platt married in 1945 and led one of the most well-known and charitable Jewish families in Los Angeles. Herman's father, Ben Platt, founded Sinai Temple in the 1920s, and both Herman and Margie expanded its size and breadth, with Herman serving as their longest-living president. Margie and Herman also built the Mount Sinai Memorial Park. They also committed their lives to supporting institutions of faith, education, and healing, including Cedar Sinai, UCLA, City of Hope, and many others. They threw themselves into serving others and our city. Margie also founded the University of Judaism in Los Angeles, and Herman endowed the Marjorie and Herman Platt Art Gallery. But above all else, Margie was devoted to her family and her children. Together, Herman and Margie had two daughters, Nancy and Cindy, and raised them with Herman's other children, Ken, Steve, and Suzie. Margie became the beloved matriarch of a family that included five children, 16 grandchildren, and 27 great-grandchildren. Each of them, each one of them, she loved with her unique charm and boundless warmth. On July 11 of this year, Margie passed away... On July 11th of this year, Margie passed away from COVID-19 and joined her husband in eternal peace. Margie is survived by her families, countless friends, and Los Angeles institutions that she helped shape and build. The family has asked any memorial donations to be sent to the Cedar Sinai Hospital. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Blumenfield?
Thank you. Colleagues, on Monday, June 30th, we lost the prolific and hilarious entertainment icon, Carl Reiner. He died at the age of 98. He changed our nation, he changed Los Angeles during his seven-decade career. He was born in the Bronx in 1922 to Jewish immigrant, Jewish immigrants Irving and Bessie Reiner. When he was a teenager, he took advantage of a program provided by the WPA, or the Works Progress Administration, and attended his first acting class with Mrs. Whitmore. The program changed the direction of his life. Instead of continuing his work as a machinist helper, he joined a theater troupe. Carl began writing and performing in Sid Caesar's Your Show of Shows in 1950, followed by Caesar's Hour with Mr. Caesar, along with a group of young writers, including Neil Simon and his best friend for over 70 years, Mel Brooks. Mr. Reiner helped literally revolutionize television comedy as we know it. Carl and Mel recorded their act, The 2,000-Year-Old Man, in 1960. I remember I used to listen to that all the time, not in 1960, but later on when I was a kid. And the following, that following year, Mr. Reiner created and acted in the groundbreaking situation comedy, The Dick Van Dyke Show. Throughout the 1970s and 80s, he continued directing, including films such as My God with George Burns, as well as with Steve Martin, certain classics, All of Me, Dead Men Don't Wear Plaid, and one of my all-time favorite movies, The Jerk. He seemed to never stop working. He continued to share his talents with a new generation by appearing in Ocean's Eleven film, as well as Hot in Cleveland and Two and a Half Men. If his career in television, films, Broadway, and all things comedy wasn't enough, Mr. Reiner also wrote over two dozen books, and later in life, he took pleasure in creating one of the funniest, insightful, and always thought-provoking Twitter accounts. With all the recognition, including many Emmys, a Grammy, and the Mark Twain Prize for American Humor, he was most importantly, husband to his late wife, Estelle, father to Rob, Lucas, and Annie, and a proud grandfather. Thank you, Mr. Reiner, for the countless laughs, for making such an indelible imprint on your many generations of fans. My deepest condolences go to your loving family and your countless friends and loved ones and your infinite number of fans. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Any other adjourned motions, members? Okay, saying none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Those are essential to this airport and this city in the long term. So we made sure that we did everything we could to continue with those projects so we can deliver them as soon as possible. We've actually been able to take advantage of the downturn to accelerate some of the construction around those projects. So those were really critical that we had to continue. It also helps us to maintain the jobs, so the construction jobs continue during this period, which is, you know, obviously very important. Also, our terminal projects, so we have some major terminal projects going on, and again, we didn't want to lose the momentum that we had on those, so we continued with those projects as well. Some of the newer projects that we haven't started actual construction on now, we've, you know, taken a pause to, to see how things are going, and hopefully we'll be able to continue those again as well. We have a very ambitious, ambitious program that we need to put in place before the Olympics in 2028, and so we, we want to make sure we're moving forward with that as, as fast as possible.